Good morning, everybody. We're going to convene the public hearing of the Public Safety and Security Committee for this Thursday. Appreciate, appreciate everybody's time. We do have a fairly varied agenda, which is the excitement of the Public Safety Committee. And so we'll get right into it. We're going to start off hearing from our agencies and a couple of members, and then we'll go into the general public as time goes on. So first I'd like to welcome from the Department of Energy Environmental Protection Deputy Commissioner Mason Trumbull and team. Morning Deputy Commissioner.
Good morning, Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, esteemed members of the Public Safety Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mason Trumbull. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Conservation at the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And I'm here today to testify on SB 7051, which requires DEEP and DESP to create a bear management plan in the interest of public safety. A decade ago, bears did not pose a public safety risk here in Connecticut. However, a lot has changed over the last 10 years. In today's testimony, I'd like to briefly share our trends related to bear safety and public safety related to bears, and provide you with a brief summary of what we're already doing to manage bears here in Connecticut. So to start, I'd like to present you with some statistics that show some of the trends over the past 10 years. So bears in Connecticut have lost their fear of humans, which has resulted in an increase, an increase in both the frequency and the severity of our human bear conflicts here in the state. So we'll start with the frequency. 10 years ago, we had approximately 500 human bear conflicts reported to DEEP. Just last year, that number has increased to 3,500, over seven times what it was a decade ago. What's more concerning to me in the interest of public safety is that we have seen an increase in the times when bears are entering people's homes. So again, 10 years ago, that number was less than 10. Just last year, that number has increased to 67. Again, approximately seven times what it was a decade ago. And then most concerning to me is starting in 2020, we have seen a consistent pattern of bear attacks happening each year in Connecticut. So in total, there's only been seven bear attacks. However, before 2020, we really did not have any sort of consistent pattern of bear attacks occurring in the state. Thankfully, most of these bear attacks have only resulted in minor injuries. However, in 2022, there was a 10-year-old boy who was severely injured by a bear attack in the western part of the state. Our conflicts here in Connecticut are much higher than those in other states. For example, Connecticut has more than five times the rate of bear home entries per 100 bears than compared to our neighboring states, including Massachusetts, New York, and others. As we think about comparing ourselves to other states, Connecticut, it's important for you to know that Connecticut is the only state without, in the region, with an active bear population without a bear hunt. So with that as context, I'd like to share a little bit with you around what we are doing to prevent human bear conflicts here in the state. And we've invested a significant amount of time, effort, and funds in order to do that. Because we don't have a hunt, our primary tool to reduce human bear conflicts is public education and outreach, in which we have made a significant investment over the past decade. Every year we publish an annual bear report that should be coming out soon, within the next week or so, that demonstrates the statistics I just shared with you, as well as other trends across the state related to our management of bears. We do bear seminars and presentations across the state, partnering with municipalities. We have published education videos, flyers, bulletins. We've joined Bearwise. We've hired a marketing agency to help us with this, publishing paid ads on social media and even having billboards on 84 on routes headed into the western part of the state where we see high conflicts. On top of that, our biologists spend a significant amount of time responding in the field to human bear conflicts, including hazing bears and occasionally relocating bears, which is becoming less and less of a solution as it simply generally results in only trends locating a problem bear from one area to another. So despite these significant efforts from our team, human bear conflicts continue to increase, demonstrating that the public education and outreach in and of itself is not sufficient to prevent the continued increase of bear conflicts here in the state. I'm joined today by my colleagues Colonel Lewis, who leads our Environmental Conservation Police, our Wildlife Division Director Jenny Dixon, and our Lead Wildlife Biologist Jason Holly. And I will say Jason's an internationally recognized wildlife biologist when it comes to managing human bear conflicts. We actually had a delegation from Tokyo travel to Connecticut to learn from Jason last year. So we're grateful to have him on our team. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you for your testimony, and I think you hit the nail on the head. You know, why, the questions come up a couple of times. Why is this issue in front of the Public Safety Committee? Largely because it has become a matter of public safety and is involved more than just your agency, which has done a good job with the resources that you have. Just looking into the crystal ball, what do you anticipate, you know, the bear populations and the frequency of interactions to be over the next couple of years? Is this, is this something that we're peaking right now at the population? Or are trends looking to continue to go up and the frequency of human interaction continue to grow? I mean, I saw over the summer, you know, a bear climbed the gate at the governor's mansion in West Hartford, which is not exactly the environment I would expect to see a black bear. So I don't know if that's best for you, sir.
Yeah. Hi again. My name is Jason Holly. I am the Senior Bear Biologist for DEEP. You know, we've, I've been with the state, working with bears for about 20 years. And over that time, I've seen the population increase in geographic range and in size. We've seen the severity of conflicts increase. Based on habitat suitability analysis that we've done, we believe that the suitable bear habitat for the state, only about one-third of it is currently occupied. So we expect the population to potentially triple. And we expect the severity and number of conflicts to continue to increase. So for example, eastern Connecticut probably has more suitable bear habitat than western Connecticut does. But that expansion has been pretty slow because of the Connecticut River Valley has sort of acted as a barrier. But we are now starting to see bears starting to reoccupy that part of the state from central mass and also starting to cross the Connecticut River. So I expect, you know, everything, so all of the above to increase exponentially. Conflicts, severity of conflicts, and our bear population numbers.
And do you, and this may be, are there tools in your toolbox that you do not have that you wish you did have to be able to manage this? And I'm not sure who that's appropriate to go to.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Like I said in my opening comments, we're the only state in the region that does not have a bear hunt. We think a bear hunt would be the appropriate next step in the tools that we have available to us as biologists in managing the bear population and reducing, specifically reducing the human bear conflicts.
Okay, thank you. And my last question before I open up to the committee is probably to our friends at the NCON Police. You know, can you just walk through what a typical call for service might look like? You get a call about a bear in a suburban neighborhood that may be uncomfortably close to children and some videos. Kind of what does that look like and what other agencies other than your agency might be involved in that?
Sure. Thank you. Chris Lewis, Colonel for Environmental Conservation Police Division. Just, that's how I like. So we're a relatively small agency. We have 62 sworn officers. We cover the whole state. So a typical bear call, which last year we had two, almost 270, well over 270 is, it's a, so that's our priority response for us. So we respond to those depending on where our officers are at. And then if it's in the municipality, depending on what municipality is, our municipal partners will respond as well too. So it's usually race to see who gets there first. And it's just to, you know, primarily is if the bear's in the home, you know, are the people safe? Get them out, protecting the public that might be still out there wanting to see the bear. And then ensuring the bear is safely away from the area, you know, that can involve hazing. Depending on the severity of the bear, could be, couldn't, you know, even go up to euthanizing the bear if it's, you know, actively aggressive in the house. So multiple agencies that do this, we've worked with state police. You know, our main partners are the ones where we have most conflict bears. You're talking Avon PD, Sinnesbury PD, Bloomfield PD, he's had several in the past year. Lot, lot, you know, in, you mentioned Hartford. We've had, just beyond the governor's gate, we've had several cases where we've worked with Hartford PD getting bears out of downtown Hartford. They're trapped, just, you know, we had a couple, just two blocks from here last year that we've had to, you know, you know, keep the public away and let the bear go on its way. And then there's some there we had to remove. So it depends on the situation, but it's, it's, until we get there and assess the bear and what the bear is doing, you know, no one knows, you know, is the bear still in the house with people in the house? If someone trapped upstairs, we've had that in the past. So it's always a fluid situation when we go to these calls.
Representative, if I may, I did, and I'm glad to share this, we have a record of some of our NCON calls for service. And I can just read a couple excerpts from the officers. Bear presently in playroom, first floor of residence, family of five, parents and three children presently in detached garage. Another one, bear downstairs kitchen of occupied residence, unknown where mother is in residence. Another one here, bear in house, resident hiding upstairs in bedroom. This is an excerpt of 60 pages of calls we have here, which I'd be glad to share with the committee.
Yeah, we appreciate that. I guess my last question is, we've, we've attempted in this committee to take the holistic public safety approach, not specifically say bear hunt, no bear hunt, that type of thing. But, but to say to your agency, you know, you have the experts clearly, right? And you, you know, the science behind this to create a plan and then execute the plan. Do you think, do you think that is the path forward to kind of take the holistic approach? And then, you know, allow as the situation changes over the next couple of years, likely to be able to employ different pieces that seem fitting at the time?
Yeah, I'll turn to Jason here in just a second, as he'd be the one responsible to put together a bear management plan. But, you know, candidly, I think we, we do an exceptional amount of work related to bear management. We've, we've put, most of our outreach and education materials are not in the form of comprehensive plan because we think they'd be easier to share in, you know, smaller snippets. We have done all the work that would be required to do a plan. I think the one thing, as I mentioned before, that we have not done, which we've testified before the legislature and the environment committee many times, supporting a bear hunt. So really, in order to have a bear management plan, we would look to have a hunt in order to put that together. And Jason, maybe you can share a bit more about what that looks like and why that is.
Yeah. So the short answer is we've had a working draft of a bear management plan as part of our federal grant requirements for about 10 years. You know, we've updated it a few times. It outlines all the tools we currently use, but the tools that we have to quote unquote, manage the bears in the state right now are ineffective. They are no longer effective. So the reason we have not moved that plan forward is because that plan relies so heavily on population management through a harvest. Without the ability to manage the population through a harvest, it's essentially a human bear conflict mitigation plan. It's not a management plan. A management plan would need, we'd need the ability to actually manage the population.
Thank you. And, and that's kind of what we're looking at here. I guess my takeaway here is that bears don't swim across the Connecticut River. So that's interesting. Ranking Member Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. So I just, a couple of quick things. One, so as I understand it, when you look at it, the neighboring states and whatnot, you know, we, our encounters are significantly higher. And you said that we're the only ones without a bear hunt, which I acknowledge. Are there other things that we're doing different than our other states when you look at this holistically? In other words, do we, do we do waste management, for example, different than our neighboring states or something like that?
I'm not, I think the big thing, the most important, impressive thing, like I said, that we're doing differently is really related to a hunt. We don't have a hunt, other states do. We do have, we've worked extensively on public education outreach related to, we see two areas where we have a lot of conflicts. They're not the most severe conflicts, but they lead to the more severe conflicts. So we have bird feeders and trash, as you mentioned. And so we've done a lot of public outreach related to those two issues to try to help folks better manage their trash. That's expensive. So a bear, a bear-proof trash can that is compatible with like a normal pickup service would start minimum at probably right around $500. So it's just, it's expensive. It's an expensive solution to implement. I think some folks I know personally, folks who have made that investment in buying a bear-proof trash can, but certainly it's a pretty big cost for folks to invest in, in doing that. We've worked with Audubon. They've helped us, as have many other conservation organizations, get the public safety message out around don't feed bears. Audubon's been especially helpful with us to help educate their members around safe use of bird feeders, taking bird feeders down during the times when human bear conflicts are high.
So thank you. So would I be correct to say, because, you know, there's not much opposition on this bill right now, this year. But in years past, when this has come up, would I be correct in saying that, look, Connecticut DEEP and the state of Connecticut has exhausted all reasonable alternatives to a hunt. It's not, we're having more and more bear and human conflict, and we just really need to go down the hunt route. Would that be a fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. And my other question is, the bill before, 7051 directs you, your agency, along with DESP, to submit a plan to us in January. And what I heard earlier is maybe we don't, maybe that plan already exists. So if, if the plan, well, let me ask you guys collectively, is there a plan that's sort of a draft, as you said, that addresses this now? That you already have that you could submit to us? Granted, you may not have worked with DESP on it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would say the plan, you know, would definitely need some work because it never really got past that initial stage because it relied so heavily on, you know, the ability to have a harvest. So it's kind of been put on hold. But yeah, I think pretty much everything that is, is pointed out in the bill is, you know, stuff we've already done and being addressed or could easily be addressed in the plan already. So the bones are there for the plan. It's just a matter of, well, how do we move forward with this if we can't do what we know we need to do?
Well, my, my question is because if we have 67 bears going into, to homes per year, and that number is only growing, right? And we wait until next year to get a plan from you, then we have to pass that plan, assuming that we can. And then it has to be implemented. So we're talking, I mean, you know, the terms act of Congress came from somewhere, right? So we're talking two or three years before we actually start trying to manage this population. And if we could take a year off of that now with some substitute language. So in other words, if you, if you have a plan now that you could get to us in the relatively near future, perhaps we can substitute this bill with that plan now and literally just chop one year off of that, off of that time.
Yes, that would be possible.
All right. So perhaps when we're done here, I'll just, I'll speak with you if I can, just, just briefly and make sure we have the right contact information between us. I don't see Harrison here, but it's so that we could do that because I haven't obviously talked to my colleagues yet. But I mean, if there's no sense in being, you know, putting out a year if you already are ready to go. Those are all my questions. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Morning. Thank you for coming. How would this help a city like Waterbury? We're not going to be hunting bears in, in Waterbury to the best of my knowledge. We do have a tremendous population of bears going through neighborhoods, running around cities. How would this hunt help a city like Waterbury? If we're only killing them in certain areas, how would it, how would it help, help Waterbury?
So yeah, I, I take a lot of calls from Waterbury with conflicts. And the short answer to that is, you know, our bears, we have about 30 female bears with GPS collars on them in the state. So we can monitor their home ranges. We know how far they range. Our females, their home ranges are up to 50 kilometers squared. So bears that are spending time in Waterbury are spending time over in New York State. They're spending time, you know, in the more rural towns around that area. They're not just living in Waterbury. So they certainly spend time in state forests around the area, areas that, you know, they could be hunted. So in our male bears range three times that far, so 150 kilometers squared or larger. So they're not just where they're causing problems, they're also out, you know, in the woods at times.
So that bear in Waterbury might, might travel 30, 40 miles?
Certainly.
And then, and then return to Waterbury? All right. Thank you.
And Representative, in our upcoming air report, I have a draft copy here. You can't see it from, from the distance, but we do have some maps showing the geographic range that range from cities like Danbury and Hartford to well into the more rural areas, like you mentioned.
Thank you. Ranking Member Chikrow.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to testify today, Deputy Commissioner. Just a couple of questions. You gave some numbers. It went from 500 to 3,000. Can you give me the date range on that?
I can't. It was the last 10 years.
Okay.
And we'll be publishing our bear report next week, and we'll have the graph showing the exact ups and downs, but the exact trends that I just mentioned. So we'll be able to provide that to you, and I'm glad to share it directly with the committee once it's published.
Got it. And I guess the second question is, is it steadily going up? Or was there a certain set of events or some reason why we're seeing it so much more frequently than we did 10 years ago, five years ago?
The overall trend line is absolutely going up, just like any trend line. It does vary from year to year, and a lot of that depends on conditions in the field. And Jason could probably explain some of that better than I could.
Yeah. So our conflicts are increasing every year. I mean, so when we say 3,500 conflicts, obviously all of those aren't what we consider severe conflicts of a bear breaking into a home, things like that. But what really concerns me is just the severity of the conflicts we're seeing. So, you know, normally when somebody calls me up and they say, I'm having problems with a bear, I can usually give them a solution. I can say, you got to secure your garbage better. But when someone calls me up and says, my garbage is locked up, I have no bird feeders, my doors were locked and my windows were locked, and the bear broke through the window of my house and went upstairs and was right outside my child's bedroom. I don't know what advice I can give them in that situation. So it's to a point where, you know, at times I'm like, I don't even know how to help you, which is frustrating for me.
No, I completely understand, and it is scary. But I was just trying to determine if there was a certain set of events that, that, you know, created this sudden increase, but I guess it's been for 10 years slowly going up.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's partially population growth, but we've, we're seeing also to get older bear population. So bears that are becoming more habituated every year, you know, they're learning every time they interact with humans. It's a positive experience. It's not a negative experience. Where in other states, most of the time, it's a negative experience around humans. Our bears in Connecticut, it's always positive. They're getting food. So they're learning, you know, we have some bears that are 30 years old. They're teaching their cubs, and it's just kind of, you know, as our bears get older, they're becoming more and more habituated, more food conditioned. So it's just something that's going to continue, you know, we had a, when we had a young bear population, bear, it takes bears a while to learn, and our bears have learned. And they're, they're also adapting to the education that we're giving people. So a town like Heartland, which is a great example, most people in Heartland have been dealing with bears for 30 plus years. And you won't find many bird feeders or unsecured garbage in the town of Heartland. So everyone in that town is doing everything right. But now we're having to tell them, you can't have your windows open in the summer when it's 90 degrees out and they don't have air conditioning. So it's just, you know, the bears are adapting with the education that we're providing to the public and to the point where, so yeah, I would say it's just habituation and food conditioning over years, over the years as our population ages.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And, you know, when you say that, people watching may think, oh, nice bear. They're going to come, you know, get a snack and leave. How dangerous is an interaction with a bear? When you, when you say it that way, like they're, you know, they're getting friendly to people. My understanding is that they're not friendly. You get close, it could get pretty bad pretty quick.
Yeah. You know, I would say it's very different if you're talking about, you know, Connecticut versus Maine, right? Like a bear in Maine, you might see it running across the road and that's it, as fast as it can across the road. When I first started here in Connecticut, it was very rare where I would look at a bear or observe their behavior and say that bear is dangerous. Like I have young kids myself, and we live in a town that has a lot of bears. And it was never really a concern to me. So I would say a wild bear that's acting like a wild bear is not, is pretty rare for them to be a threat towards humans. But what I've been seeing lately, the way the bears have lost their fear and approaching people. You know, I had a bear push my air conditioner in, in my own home when my children were home. And I try to put myself in the place of the people that call me, like, is this something they should have to deal with? And it's become more and more where I think some of these bears are becoming dangerous and their behavior is more unpredictable, the more habituated and food conditioned. It's hard, it's easy for me to predict the behavior of a wild bear. It's becoming very difficult for me to predict the behavior of these habituated and food-conditioned bears.
Got it. Thank you. Just with the conversations that were going on in the past years about bear hunting, I'd have people calling me up basically saying, you know, leave the poor bear alone. And they're not hearing those stories about them being inside of a home, essentially breaking into a house and how dangerous they could be. a friendly animal, uh, essentially. That, that's why I asked. And then the reason why I asked the first question about if there was a, um, an event or a certain, um, series of events that made their, their, um, frequency in these areas that they've never been. Um, I live by the, um, Sleeping Giant Mountain and we had a series of, of bad storms, one hurricane that took down a lot of the trees, like really did a number. And I'm actually looking at a picture right now. My, my tablet just showed the good representative. There's a bear in my backyard, a pretty big bear. We've never saw one before. Um, and I was just curious if, if it had anything to do with anything like that, but, but it seems to be, it's just an aging population. They reproduce. And clearly they're not going anywhere if they have the accessibility to food and, and the things that we've just talked about. So, um, you helped me understand, uh, more and hopefully educated some of the individuals that might be concerned that we might have to take some action and, and, you know, do a bear hunt.
And you will start seeing more bears down there. Bears are semi, semi territorial. So what we're seeing is as the space is being occupied in Northwest Connecticut, that range is expanding. So the younger bears are being sort of pushed down into, you know, those towns in southwestern Connecticut and we'll start to see that in, um, Eastern Connecticut as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Representative Lanu.
Oh yeah. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Deputy Commissioner, thank you for being with us today. Colonel, very nice to see you again and, uh, thank you to the support staff. Uh, just a couple of questions, if I may, uh, I'm just, uh, you had, uh, mentioned Deputy Commissioner that bears have lost their fear of people. And I guess, I guess where I'm, I'm curious is does that require that each, how does that happen? Is it hereditary or do they have to have some sort of direct contact each and every bear in order to lose their fear? Could you answer that a little?
Absolutely. I'll turn to Jason, but what I'll say is, cause he's a biologist, but when bears get food, they like that. They want more food. And so that's how, that is how bears lose their natural fear of human. When they get food from human sources, bird feeders, you leave a bag of dog food on your deck, grills, uh, et cetera. Then that trains them to go back to those sources to get more food. And Jason, Jason's the expert. So I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah. So there's, there's two different things going on. There's habituation and there's food conditioning. So habituation is essentially just becoming comfortable with people. I would say every bear in the state of Connecticut has some level of habituation because it's Connecticut. So, uh, you know, almost everywhere they go, they're hearing humans, they're smelling humans, they're seeing humans. Um, so you know, and as bears have more and more interactions with humans and those interactions are almost always positive. Um, they're very rarely negative. Um, so that's that habituation. So I have nothing to fear from humans. So that's how we get habituation. They're around them all the time. They're not afraid of their dogs. They're not afraid when the people yell at them. So that's the habituation side of it. The food conditioning side of it is what's a little more dangerous. And you know, there's certainly some crossover between habituation and food conditioning. But that's from when people are, whether intentionally or unintentionally feeding bears. Now those bears, they're, they were already habituated. Now they're becoming food conditioned and they're now associating people with food. And part of what we've seen is as, you know, in towns like Heartland, Barkhamsted, where people are starting to follow our guidance or pretty much follow, um, perfectly. Those habituated and food conditioned bears are now showing up at houses where they used to find a bird feeder. And now those bird feeders aren't there. And they're looking other places. Well, there's good smells coming from inside that house. Why don't I go see what's in there? Cause there's nothing to fear here. These people are nice to me and they always give me food. So that's where you get into a very dangerous situation.
Um, are, are children, uh, small children even at greater risk than perhaps an adult with that sort of, of a, uh, a mindset of a bear or its conditioner?
Yeah, I, I would say, um, you know, obviously they're, you know, less able to defend themselves, but, um, the situation that really, you know, keeps me up at night, um, predatory behavior in bear, in black bears is actually fairly rare. Um, but we've seen a few incidents of it here in Connecticut. Uh, the case in Morris was, was a great example. Um, it's rare, but we're starting to see that predatory behavior a little bit more in the state, which to me is very concerning and certainly children. Um, you know, would be more susceptible to that, you know, that particular case in Morris. Had the neighbor not heard the screaming and come over and, you know, defended the child and, and beat the bear off. I, I believe that would have been a fatal attack. Um, it could have ended very differently. We're lucky with that one. So yeah, I would say in some sense, children are certainly more at risk.
And it's very scary. Um, do you happen to know, sir, uh, how many, um, uh, cubs a female bear will have each year in their lifetime? Can you speak to that?
So, um, black bears reproduce every other year. Um, once they're about four years old, they have their first litter. Um, our average litter size in Connecticut is about two point four. Um, it may actually be increased. We've seen it increase over the years. It might be about two point six right now. So that's every other year. Uh, survival. So first year survival for cubs is close to eighty percent, which for a wild animal is, is really, really high. Um, and then after that, it just, it just depends on how long the bear lives. You know, we, we have some females that are close to thirty years old. So, you know, do the math, you know, two point five cubs every other year for thirty years. I mean, and with that high survival rate, they can definitely produce quite a few cubs.
Quite a few. And like you said, eighty percent of the cubs survive into adult bearhood.
Yeah. And then once, once they're one year old, there's, uh, annual survival is over ninety percent.
So you, and you said the average litter size, I'm sorry, the average litter size is two point four cubs. Do you know what the high end is?
Um, the highest we've seen is four. Um, but up until six or seven years ago, we hadn't seen litters of four. Now they're, we're seeing them regularly.
That's, uh, scary. Um, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Deputy Commissioner, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, my good vice chair was just asking about the point four is one they have to do this. Um, any other, uh, any other questions for members of the committee? Senator, go ahead.
Uh, thanks for being here, Deputy Commissioner. Um, I attended, I attended one of your, um, sessions in Simsbury, um, last year, which was, uh, very informative. Um, and I came away from that with the impression that a bear hunt alone was not going to solve the problem. Am I, is that wrong? A, a bear hunt alone will solve the problem?
I, I can, I can speak to that. Absolutely. You're not wrong. So a bear hunt alone is not the solution. Then what we're saying is we're doing all the other things and all the other tools and toolbox, we're already using them. The only like public outreach and education, the seminars that you mentioned, the work that our biologists do, we're doing all those things right now. The only thing we're not doing, the only tool we're not using is a hunt. So a hunt is not the only solution. However, it is the only tool that we are not currently implementing.
Thank you. And, and, um, as far as the, the bears in Maine having bad experiences with people versus the bad, the bears in Connecticut having good experiences with people, the difference is just the hunt. Is that what we're saying here?
Yeah. I mean, to use a better example, Massachusetts, um, you know, I'm pretty good friends with the bear biologist in Massachusetts, Dave Waddles and, you know, him and I have talked about this at length because you know, pretty, pretty similar topography, pretty similar bear density, pretty similar human density in Western Mass to where our bear population is. And the bears in Massachusetts don't act the way that they act in Connecticut. They're pretty skittish of people. Um, they didn't have any home entries last year. They've got, I think thirty five hundred bears in the state. You know, we've got, you know, a thousand, twelve hundred and we had almost seventy home entries. So him and I have gone back and forth through years. We're like, what's the difference? And there's only one difference and it's that we don't have a harvest in Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Thank you, Senator. Any other questions for members of the committee? I, I think it goes without saying that your team's available to have offline conversations about, uh, these things as well. Again, you know, that case in Morris that the representative references is really why this committee started to take interest in it because it became, um, it became more of a public safety issue than just an academic one or an environmental one. So we appreciate, uh, all of your time. Uh, NCOM Police had some great, uh, press this week and the Hartford Current as well. So congratulations to that. It's good. It's good for the agency. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. And I'll just, I'll just close with, uh, Commissioner Dyke sends her a grant. She had another, uh, committee and energy and technology, uh, hearing today. So she does, uh, support our position and, and she sends her, um, regress. So she wasn't able to make it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, next is the Department of Administrative Services with the Commissioner and the State Fire Marshal. Welcome back. Representative McGordy promised me in his best behavior today, so.
So sad. Well, I wasn't counting on that. Um, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, by way of introduction, I'm Michelle Gilman, uh, Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services, and I'm pleased to introduce you to Lori Volker, who is our State Fire Marshal recently appointed in December. Uh, many of you I know have met Lori, uh, through informal exchanges, um, but pleased to, uh, welcome her to, uh, Public Safety Committee today. So thank you. Um, so officially we are here, uh, and Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, Senator Tricarella, Representative Howard and distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. Uh, we are here to, um, testify in opposition to House Bill seven zero five four and act concerning the safe sale, excuse me, the sale and use of non-aerial and non-explosive consumer fireworks and sky lanterns. Um, this bill authorizes a sale and use by consumers of, um, non-ex, non-aerial and non-explosive fireworks and sky lanterns to anyone eighteen years or older. While we support increasing the age from sixteen to eighteen and who can sell, purchase or use these items, we do oppose the addition of non-aerial and non-explosive fireworks and sky lanterns to what is, uh, legal now in the state of Connecticut. Uh, Lori is going to testify further in terms of some of the safety statistics and fire prevention, um, concerns that we have, and we'll certainly summarize those as you have our written testimony before you. Um, but again, appreciate your consideration or our opposition to this bill. So I'll pass over the mic to Lori. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm happy to be here. I look forward to working with you to promote fire and life safety across the state of Connecticut. And in that regards, this is a, a topic that jumps out at me as, um, as an important topic to tackle as a state. And recognizing that the national statistics that was included in our written testimony gives a good argument as to why consumer fireworks are just not a safe option. The safe is, you know, to keep everyone safe, it's best to go to professional shows, um, seeing more than thirty one thousand fires per year. Uh, last year alone, that included thirty five hundred structure fires, um, over eight hundred vehicle fires and over twenty six thousand outside fires, um, across the country. And to bring that home here in the state of Connecticut, we've historically had more restrictive um, laws concerning consumer fireworks and only allowing sparklers and fountains. And even with those restrictive statutes, we saw twenty two fires related to fireworks last year alone. Um, seven of those were brush fires or other outside fires. Four of them were building fires. Nine involve rubbish or dumpsters and two vehicle fires. These happened at seven, one and two family homes, five multifamily homes and one school, as well as some other air, outdoor areas. And looking at the statistics from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one from DPH, we average about thirty four burn injuries related to fireworks here in the state of Connecticut alone. And so looking at this as, um, typically these non-aerial, non-explosive fireworks are considered safe and sane fireworks. Um, but even with those restrictions, we're still seeing a lot of injuries. And then related to, um, on a separate note, the sky lanterns are also of grave concern to my office, especially considering our recent experience with the emergency burn ban and increased a focus on preventing outside fires. We recognize from the National Park Service that eighty five percent of wildland fires are human started and sky lanterns play a part in that. Sky lanterns are basically these, um, aerial structures that are burning. They're uncontrolled and can fly up to a mile. And so we're really concerned with those falling down, um, dropping down onto structures and starting fires in structures and wildland. And in addition to that, also just the, the pollution aspect and recognizing there have been stories coming out of, um, England of cows actually ingesting the frames and perishing due to the sky lantern. So, um, as stated, due to the, um, all of these dangers, the, the best course of action to promote fire and life safety across the state is to oppose this bill.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and I was just gonna ask that it's the position of your office that no expansion of the current fireworks in any means, novelties or not, is, is opposed. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Questions from members of the committee? You wanna say hello, McGordy?
I will say hello. Thank you for coming, Commissioner and Fire Marshal, and I look forward to meeting with you both next week.
Thank you.
You know, I was holding back all these bear comments and they're describing a aging bear. I'm like, well, you're really describing Representative McGordy. But I held back on that to see if he would behave or not.
I'm a teddy bear.
Um, questions from members of the committee? Um, hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Representative DiCaprio, welcome.
Commissioner, good to see you.
Good to see you, my representative. Thank you.
And, um, just a question, um, as far as the town fireworks, um, you know, are there any of those incidents, uh, fire incidents related to any of those in town or are these smaller scale?
I'll have to do some digging into the specifics of those fires, but I can get back to you with that specific information.
I know the town that I live in Lebanon, you know, we're trying to be very careful about, you know, where we're shooting the, you know, the fireworks and so forth. Um, so I was just curious on that.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for sharing that this morning. Thank you. Good to see you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You gotta watch out for those Lebanon people in the front of us. Um, uh, as always, Commissioner, I appreciate your availability and again, thank you for coming and testifying today. So thank you.
We look forward to working with you again throughout the session. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see Senator Martin here. He's next. Senator Martin, is he hiding here? Nope. I don't see Representative Foster. But I do see Representative Funchella. So welcome, sir. The, the floor is yours. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee.
Morning, Chairs and, uh, members of the committee. I'm State Representative Marty Foncello. I would like to yield my time here to Captain Richard Wasilek, Jewish City Fire Department, who will speak to you about one of the bills before you today. Thank you.
Do you even know where Jewish City is? Well, I'm asking the good representative. I know where it is. My, my mother is from Jewish City, so. Welcome, sir. Make sure you turn your mic on, uh, right in front of you. Push the button right there. There we go. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So, good morning, members of the Public Safety Committee. My name is, uh, Richard Wasilek. I'm currently captain of the Jewish City Fire Department, which is in the town of Griswold. It's a borough of Griswold.
My, uh, my father grew up in Rickstown, so that, uh, so I, I know.
I'll have to find out where that is later. So. I've held different positions around Eastern Connecticut and different organizations, uh, volunteered where I have lived in the fire departments in the towns. So I always believed in volunteering in the town. Over the years, I've been in full time, part time per diem uh, for about thirty years now, since nineteen ninety four in emergency services. I'm currently Emergency Services Function nine chairman or co-chairman, which is Technical Search and Rescue fiduciary of the Emergency Services Function eight, which is public health. Uh, with, uh, member of the Emergency Services Function five, which is emergency management. I'm also on the Eastern Connecticut Region EMS Council. I also serve as Deputy Emergency Management Director for the town of Griswold. And I've also been volunteering and working as a dispatcher for the last thirty years in different agencies, New London and Waterford, full time. I'm here this morning to speak to you about the, uh, bill zero seven zero five five, which is about stipends and we am not taxing volunteer firefighters for the first two thousand dollars. So a lot of the communities that we live in now are all volunteer. Town of Griswold does not have one paid staff member in the town itself. In a neighboring town though, in the town of Lisbon, they paid about three hundred thousand dollars for a part-time firefighters, which is only staffing two times, two firefighters during the day, Monday through Friday. And they're looking to increase that this year to over three hundred thousand dollars or more. The town of Griswold's stipend was sixty thousand dollars last year. And that supplement is forty five volunteer firefighters in the town of Griswold. Each volunteer firefighter got about fifteen hundred dollars, depending on the level of that training, officer position and volunteer firefighter EMS. But with that, the time they had to put in, the OSHA requirements annually consisted of about six different courses, which took up a whole day this past Sunday. They have to obtain a minimum of firefighter one or EMT. Firefighter one requiring a hundred and fifty hours of training voluntarily. EMT up to three hundred hours voluntarily. Minimum of fifteen to twenty percent of one week, one night during the week of training. Live structural firefighter training annually equalling over eight hours. And other, of those, the members also must respond to over twenty percent or more of calls, emergency responses throughout the year. Now the Jewish City Fire Department alone in little over one square mile did over seven hundred calls. Emergency responses only. So you have to make at least twenty percent of those to get your stipend. On top of the training and all those hours, they have to volunteer. That equals over nine hundred and two hours annually that a volunteer, a minimal. That equals over 902 hours annually that a volunteer minimally will volunteer in their time for the fire department in the community. Put all those numbers together, and I'm trying to do my bullet point on the testimony I filed with you. That equals less than $1.50 an hour in their stipend. Not only are they paying taxes on their full-time job or part-time job, their property taxes on their vehicles, the majority of people in Jewish City rent, they don't actually own a home, well, majority, they're actually in the hole. They're in the red when it comes to their stipend. You put it towards the hours they volunteer. That is not including also the time that their family members don't have them a home for family events, family members worrying about them getting injured during an emergency response, leaving them at dinner. My wife actually had to walk home during a thunderstorm because we had to go to a structure fire for a house hit by lightning from dinner. So, all these put together, this is why I'm supporting the first $2,000 and the minimum stipend that a firefighter gets, not be taxed because they're already paying taxes. So, with that, I tried to bullet point my testimony, which is about nine pages. So, I'll let you.
Yeah. I thank you for taking the time to come up here today and advocate for this as well. Representative Lanu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Captain Wassilek, thank you so much for coming up here today and testifying on this very important piece of legislation.
My pleasure.
You know, it's, we've been putting this in for a couple, a few years now. The committee's been kind enough to raise every year, give us a giant favorable. So, be very, very nice to the Chairman between now and the giant favorable deadline. You know, the, I think, part of the problem, if I understand it right, from the conversations we've had and others, other chiefs in the district, is we get, you get the stipend check, the volunteers are, first responders are the fire, the firefighters, the EMS, fire police, they're not employees per se. They're volunteers. So, on this stipend check, they, a 1099 is pulled on them, which even makes it a more robust, more aggressive tax, where almost the entire check gets eviscerated through state and federal taxes. They pretty much sum that up.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I'm curious, in your role as a captain of the fire department, as it relates to EMS, EMTs, the firefighters, the fire police, have you actually seen people drop out of fire service because they get the stipend check, then the check essentially evaporates? It almost adds insult to injury, and you see people withdraw from service?
Yes. The volunteer fire service, I'm not gonna say, you know, lie to you, the volunteer fire service is hurting 100%. I don't see volunteerism 100% lasting in any fire department in the future 100%. But however, we must focus on recruitment and retention. Recruitment and retention means we have to give them a reason to want to join, but we're also running into a problem with keeping them there. Now, as we started refocusing our recruitment on younger members, we started at the high schools. We're trying to pull them in through the high schools in order to volunteer, providing courses to them. I myself am the one that teaches EMS courses in the fire department. I do the CMEs and now added more training that they have to do. So, what happening is they're joining expecting, because one of the big things we put on there is you receive a stipend. Now, as the younger members, we all know, they're not looking at volunteering as much as what am I going to get out of the time that I'm putting into it. So, they're actually joining and saying, I want my stipend, and they're keeping track of their percentages and calls that they go on. So, they're saying, okay, I met my 20%. We're saying, that's great, good job. Now, you gotta keep going. But now, they get that stipend check, and they've lost about, what, 30%? So, like, whoa, where's my stipend? You said I was getting all this money. Well, yeah, you gotta pay taxes, again, on top of what you've already paid. So, we have to explain to them that you're here to volunteer. So, now, this would actually add on to retaining them once they're in as also a member.
Yep. Well, thank you for that. If we could, if we get this legislation done, we get across the finish line, get the governor's signature on this, do you think this will help with recruitment overall in your?
100%.
Now, how about specifically our younger folks, late teens, early twenties? Do you think it will help with getting the next generation in the door?
It will help. 100%.
And in your experience, sort of, there's that carrot. And then, once they're in the door, and they start experiencing what volunteerism is all about, what fire service is all about, EMS, fire police, saving lives, saving lives of neighbors, people in their community, helping people when they're at their worst. Does that tend to grow on the volunteer where they want to stay in service? They know they're making a difference there?
Yeah. What we're finding is a lot of them join the volunteer ranks. They get the training. They catch the bug or the fire, as you will, of hey, this is great. I'm helping, making a difference. They go take these classes, the trainings that are required, and they go, actually go on to being part-time per diem, or even some, a lot of cases, full-time firefighters. So, not only is it helping the volunteer ranks, but it's also helping the full-time ranks later down the road. But it's, the hardest part honestly is getting them in and keeping them there. And this stipend is, everybody loves money. It's, you know, won't lie about it. Who doesn't like money? They're going to say, hey, I've got this money now. Now, I can do something with it. And.
Yep. A couple of years back, you know, when we got the, this bill out of public safety, it took a stop in finance because we're rewriting state tax law. There was a report from OFA that it was estimated that the state would lose $175,000 in revenue from these volunteer stipend checks. We may see it go around 200,000. Who knows if this bill passes? So, some of the pushback that was received was the state's gonna lose revenue. And with a tight budget year, why should we do this? What would be your response to that?
You're losing firefighters. You're losing people that go to your houses and help. You're losing people that go and assist you with EMS. You're losing people that are wanting to volunteer their time to go do this. So, one of the largest things that I would also go back to is that every community now, if they don't have the volunteers, you look at some towns, $300,000 just to have two firefighters in the firehouse Monday through Friday during the day only. $300,000, and it's gonna go up. So, now you add that on top of that, does not meet the minimum requirement of a two-in-two-out rule in the National Fire Protection Administration. You have to have minimum of two in the building, and two outside the building if you're gonna fight a fire without somebody's life in jeopardy.
So, do this right, you'd need four full-time firefighters per shift.
If you're going to follow the standard.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing here is that's gonna cost money. You get to have.
Looking at a million dollars minimum, just to have somebody Monday through Friday during the day.
Okay. So, essentially, I would imagine property taxes, we already have a property tax crisis in our state. This would exacerbate that.
Would exacerbate it tenfold. Not only that, but you're looking at the towns that cannot afford to have any part-time right now. They're having, they're fighting over how many pieces of toilet paper to buy at their budget right now, never mind how many supplementing firefighters to volunteer for the volunteer staff. So, now you're gonna have to go back and say, you know, we couldn't afford the toilet paper in town hall, but we're gonna put a million dollars on the budget to have firefighters because we don't want to give another $60,000 to the fire department for a stipend.
Yeah. And again, I think you testified in Griswold and Jewish City, those two departments, $60,000 over 45 different volunteers. We're talking, my math is around $1,300 for 900 hours worth of work, volunteerism a year. Nobody's got rich on this. I mean, that's, we're talking what, $1.50 or less a call. I think it's well worth it. This is a small thank you. Nobody's got rich on this. And this is, I think, a very good tool in your toolbox to make sure you guys remain the best of the community. And you're some of the best among us, some of the finest among us. There's been some pretty hairy calls. I can testify to that in town, as there is throughout the state. I saw 22,000, 27,000 firefighters in our state are volunteer.
Correct.
That's a huge number. We need to do everything we can to preserve them, get the next generation involved. Thank you so much for your testimony. I obviously wholeheartedly support this bill, and thank you for your work on this. And thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, nothing further.
Thank you. And you certainly don't have to convince me for the merits of the bill. So, questions, other questions from members of the committee? Go ahead, Mr. DiCaprio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Captain, for coming in today.
My pleasure.
And Representative, has Matt trained in your department?
Yes.
Or you have folks that are awareness, or can you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah. Well, hazardous materials awareness is required to even get on the fire truck. So, it's a requirement that every, I personally can say is fulfilled because I teach it at the station, as well as with another officer in the department. So, but not only there has been awareness, but they're also operationally trained, which is a requirement to go out and do certain things, as you know, for defensive, dammed, divert. So, we also provide that in the department as well. We do not have technician, I'm a technician myself, but I got that in another department. So, we stop at the operational level, which will start the first step before the technicians arrive on a regional level.
And there's different training with that. As I was on the Emergency Response Group in DEEP, right, for a number of years. So, there's, I just wanted to mention that, that there is a, there's a whole array of training that's required for the, you know, those qualifications. So, thank you for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Hearing none. Thank you again for making the trip all the way up here. So, we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Senator Martin has arrived, sir. You can, you can have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I don't know the bill number, but I do support that bill number from the previous speaker.
You got it.
Just to let you know, I represent somewhat of a rural area, Harlington, Thomaston, Plymouth, and Harlington, and the volunteers are desperately needed. So, whatever you can do to help out. So, I'm here to testify on HB 7051. So, Chairs Gaston and Boyd, along with ranking members, Tricorilla and Howard, and the rest of you here on the committee. So, I'm here to talk about the Bear Bill, and this, why I call it the Bear Bill. The, it doesn't go far enough. I think, you know, we've had this, a plan in place. DEEP has had a draft plan for maybe one, two years, maybe three. And it always, this bill always seems to find a way of not getting to the floor. I've testified here last year. I may have testified the year before that, and I've submitted testimony back in 2019. So, let me just read an email that I received last year. And the reason why, for my email is written by Carol Constant. The reason for my email is that I'm having a very serious problem with bears. Please give, and she asked me to give her a call. She went on. The bear did not come at me, and I'm afraid that it's going to take someone getting killed to get rid of it. It also came after my neighbor. I'm sending you a video by what was, but was unable to get it where it was supposed to be sent. Oh, well, she was standing by the window or her door, and that's what she was trying to explain to me. So, she called DEEP, and she also called, you know, the authorities around the area. You know, we've had various incidences in the past. They cover from farm animals that have been killed, homes have been broken into, as well as cars. In my district specifically, a motorist, motorcyclist was killed by collision of a bear. And I've had bears in my backyard. Now, I've only had two homes with raising my children. And I had numerous, in my first home, they were in the backyard numerous times. And, you know, we, you know, kind of fun when you first see them. And then moved, you know, 10 years ago, moved to another neighborhood. And by the way, these are neighborhoods with children and all. I'm away on vacation, and I get videotaped from my neighbor showing me that, gee, there's a black bear and a back slider, and where my 88-year-old mother lives, just made its way across the entire patio. Fast forward to this past summer, I hear this noise, commotion outside, and my neighbors are, have a black bear in their backyard, and it found its way to across in my yard, and then eventually across the street. And then the next morning, it came back, and it just went through the backyard of all the neighborhood. So, listen, these, you know, everyone thinks that they're warm and fuzzy, right? There's a term for it. But there's a plan in place. We need to really do something about it before it's too late, right? We really don't want someone to get hurt because we've been procrastinating on this bill. It's really time that it moves out of this committee, and I think it has in the past, but it really needs to move to the floor, and then eventually to the governor's office. So, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Senator. And this is, just for the record, this is the first time public safety has taken it up. As a matter of public safety, environment has been certainly mulling this over for a very, very, very long time, as far as that goes. So, questions for Senator Tricorilla?
Thank you. And thank you for coming to testify and enlighten us to your experience and your neighbor's experience. As the good chair said, it's the first time public safety is taking this up. And it's because we believe that it is a public safety risk. Would it be fair to say that you also believe that there is concern for people's well-being? Because I know that you talked about an individual was hit, or, you know, essentially hit a bear and unfortunately passed away. But are you and your constituents worried of an attack? What's the?
Absolutely. Absolutely. When you got a bear from here to the other, where you guys are sitting, it's pretty, you know, you're sort of, you're trying to watch, but at the same time, your heart rate goes up.
I agree. I agree. As I said to the first speaker, that there was a bear in my backyard, and it was pretty interesting. And after that wore off, it was a little scary, especially if I wasn't out there and my two children were out there. You said that, you know, it should move forward and get done immediately, but he says, you said that we should go further. What do you recommend that we do to address this problem?
Adopt the draft proposal that's already existing in DEEP's possession, you know, the plan that they've already put into place.
Got it. And there's a series of, I believe it's seven or eight things that they're gonna be looking into and developing this plan. And one of them was an open hunt. What is your opinion on that?
You know, what I was shared with last year, a year before, was the plan was open hunt, but in designated areas of the state, right? So, I thought in order to manage the population, listen, it's well-known, right? It's documented that there is an overabundance of black bears in our state. Why? Give me a reason why. The bears don't hear any gunfire. You wanna, you want to direct them into wooded areas? Allow the hunters to hunt bear under a managed plan in order to ward off other bears to, that, in other words, that you don't belong in this area. Go into the woods.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what, what the professionals stated, that in the other areas that there is hunts, they know not to be near the people. So, thank you for that. And thank you for the demonstration. We normally don't allow props.
Yeah.
That got my, that got my attention. The good chair allowed it, though.
Yeah. DG had a flashback to Catholic school. He thought the nuns were, no, talk. So, other, other questions for Senator Martin? Other questions?
By the way, I am not, I don't belong to a sports club regarding hunting. I'm not part of the fishing game. I do own a pistol. I hunted way early in my life when I was probably eight, nine, 10 years old, and that was bow and arrow. But I've got no stake in this game, other than trying to protect our communities, particularly the neighborhoods where these bears are shown.
And our focus is very much the public, the public safety aspect and the holistic approaches that are out there.
Then it's in the right committee, then.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Representative.
Good morning. Sorry to be late, overlapping committee meetings this morning. Senator Martin, I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you know, what is the current black bear population in Connecticut?
I do not know, but I do have a report from 2018, reports 800 bears in Connecticut, increasing at 10 to 15% per year. And that goes back to 2018.
And Representative De- And Representative Deep, who is in earlier, is is going to provide us some follow up with their with their report.
Oh, that's very good.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
I I do have another note here. It's if unchecked, population estimates could reach as high as three thousand. And that goes back to two thousand and eighteen.
And in your particular district, do you? How do you keep track of how many occurrences or instances there are of bear sightings or, you know, if if a person feels that their safety is at risk? How do they then report that?
I believe they representative, I believe they call the animal control okay, city of Bristol of police department.
Okay. And to your point of what you said, you know, depending on where you are in the state, right? Obviously, there's more dense areas. I was just curious if you had more information, particularly in your district, because you described several occurrences of of concern.
Yeah, I can only speak to Bristol. I have received numerous. Yeah, I have received emails in addition to phone calls. Some people that know who I am, and we we have a population of sixty-one thousand people. So it's not a rural twelve thousand community or sixty-seven hundred community here. We're talking about a dense area of Bristol, which most of land is pretty much taken up, you know?
Thank you. Or anything else for the Senator? All right. Well, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, everyone.
Even though we're creeping into the second hour here, I do want to let Representative Foster come back as we skipped over her earlier. Welcome, Representative.
Thank you, colleagues. It's wonderful to be here in front of the Public Safety Committee. I have to say, after four years, this is actually the first time I'm testifying before you all. But I'm a big fan of your work.
Every day Greg comes in and says, it's so wonderful to be here in the Public Safety Committee. So.
It is wonderful to be here. So to my esteemed colleagues on the Public Safety Committee, for those of you who don't know me, which is none of you. But my name is Jamie Foster, and I'm here to express my strong support for House Bill seventy fifty-three, which establishes a working group to develop uniform statutory definitions of a first responder and essential worker in Connecticut. You know, in in traditional conversations, when you think about a first responder, we think of this term encompassing police, firefighters and EMS. They're present on the scene of emergencies, but the definition can overlook the critical roles played by public safety dispatchers, often exposed though remotely to the same amount of stress and alarm that is heard and seen by the officers responding on the scene and certain public workers who are integral in an emergency response and public safety. So I have constituents testifying both as public work employees today and as dispatchers. And you'll hear from them or read their specific testimony, and I hope you'll consider it as you move forward. But I just want to highlight that dispatchers are really an unseen lifeline. We had a really tragic occurrence in Ellington several years ago. And we had a dispatcher who lived in our community, who was the person who dispatched to the scene where they identified that a human, a person who worked in our town was involved in human trafficking. And so over the phone, they were hearing these reports. They were exposed to that same level of stress and trauma. They knew the people being dispatched to the scene. They had to process all of that grief. And their work was similarly strenuous and stressful. They have critical decision-making skills. They had offer lifesaving guidance and their emotional support to the folks that they're talking to over the phone is often essential in assuring positive outcomes when people are calling in crisis. Public safe, public workers are the backbone of safety in our community. They are essential for infrastructure maintenance and response when there are damages. They ensure that roads and bridges are safely cleared and accessible, which is vital in natural disasters and responding to an accident. They are responsible for utility management and addressing emergent issues with water, electricity and gas that if left unaddressed could lead to major hazards. And they direct emergency assistance in rescue operations and can provide essential support during crises. So I think that it's important to highlight that if those workers are reclassified, that they have several advantages. It could perhaps enhance morale and retention. It can improve access to resources that they might need, including eligibility for specialized training and mental health support. And of course, as we have any of these conversations, it raises the public awareness of the importance to a comprehensive team in addressing emergencies. So I am here to support House Bill seventy fifty-three. And I hope it presents an opportunity to rectify something that's long been sought by these two workforces as an essential reclassification of the first responder and essential worker. And I think that this is an important step we can make to honor these employees and individuals who commit themselves to protecting our communities and ensuring we they receive the recognition that they feel they deserve. And I agree. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Every year we get lots of people writing to us, asking the dispatchers to be classified as first responders. And every year I have to write back and say, we actually don't have a classification of first responder in statute, right? And, you know, during COVID, limited essential workers started to appear. And so, you know, we we just we need to tackle this issue, right? And define these terms, because clearly there's there's people that are falling through the cracks. But this is our attempt to kind of get there. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. So questions, Representative Howard.
Welcome, Representative. Great to see you. So if your constituents have said to you, I've had a bunch of constituents come to me, and of course, I was a dispatcher many years ago. Great respect for what dispatchers do. We work with them every day. I had one just recently say, you know, we need to be first responders. I said, okay, tell me why. Like, what is it? What is it that 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 you need that for? And his answer to me was because we can't get a pension because the town says we're not first responders. Well, if we make you first responders, that doesn't change. That doesn't guarantee you a pension. So I've yet to have any anybody explained to me, and I appreciate your, you know, that increases morale, that makes them feel the value that they bring, which I get. And if that's the answer, we can do that in different ways. But and I and I've asked, well, is it that you want the portal of portal coverage? That that was one. As your constituents given you, and I know you sort of broadly said, you know, opening up like, you know, but I think most dispatchers specifically, I'm not sure about DBWs, have the same access to EAP, et cetera. Are there specific things that making them first responders would give them that they currently can't get that they would be guaranteed? That did they mention to you?
Yeah. So I think that there's two things that are not categorically applied. So so one is that they want to be able to access every bit of emergency training and mental health supports and all of those supports that go to those folks in need, which I think on a case-by-case basis is happening. But I think more importantly, they want their jobs acknowledged for the hazards and risks that they pose to them. And they want to have the correspondingly aligned workplace benefits that people in other traditionally classified first responders jobs have. So is it hazard pay when you are responding to dangerous situations? We have the example in the in transportation where we have acknowledged that, you know, highway-related incidences are the same risks that are posed by police officers on the highway in response. And we've lost a DOT employee that way. And so making sure that they're categorized with the risk concordant with their work is important. And so I acknowledge, as I'm saying this, I'm talking to a police officer that like it, the concordance would have to be acknowledged so that there are similar risks and they have to and they would like access to the benefits appropriate for the risk undertaken by their jobs.
Okay. The reason I ask, because this is why I anticipate it's going to happen. And we've both been here a little while now, right? I anticipate we're going to get, hey, when you open this can of worms, it's it's throughout the statutes. It's going to be, you know, fiscal notes left and right and whatnot. So I'm trying to and, you know, the next, you know, when we come back here in January, we'll we'll work what we can through this. But as as you and I continue to do too, as I talk to my my constituents in these categories to say, all right, give me narrowly what I can do to 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 get there if we can't, you know, we try to change the definition of peace officer in this committee multiple times and simply to add parole officers, and it creates massive problems throughout the entire statute that we're working through. But I just anticipate that may be an issue. So if if that happens next year, if together we can can narrowly what our dispatchers need from this legislature to get them to where they deserve to be, happy to be a partner in that.
Yeah. And I I would recommend that this committee work, and this is probably best had as like an offline conversation. But I think a lot of them have submitted testimony that would be good to recognize. But the New England Public Works Association and the Dispatchers Association, whose appropriate name is escaping me at this moment, but those groups, I think, would be really helpful thought partners in navigating what you want that classification to designate for them. And my my guess is it's going to be different between those groups pretty substantially. But I think I appreciate the approach that was taken by this committee and sort of raising this this way. Because I think, you know, it's a can of worms all the time when we do this work, but that doesn't mean it's not appropriate to dig through. And I know that you all are going to do your due diligence in doing that. So thank you.
Great. And thank you for being here today. It's always good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Representative Heffernan.
Hello, Representative Foster. Thank you for your testimony this morning. I always speak to dispatchers, and I worked very closely with them throughout my career. Only at the end of my career did they start to be acknowledged and involved in things like critical incident stress debriefing after, you know, a big call or an incident. And I I think that making them first responders officially is about being it's more inclusionary. People didn't really think about the the dispatchers, just a voice on the radio most of the time. And, you know, they they suffer from the same, even more so, and not being present, but being, you know, like you said, hearing things over the radio and that type of thing. So I think this is very important to to acknowledge them as first responders. I think it's well overdue. And, you know, I don't know what other benefits they may get or whether there's workman comp, things involved or whatnot. But they certainly would be deserving of all of that, because I think they've been left in the in the lurch for quite some time. So I thank you for for your testimony today.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative. It does always tend to come back to portal to portal, workman scop, all that stuff. So. All right. Any other questions, Representative? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Representative. Do you happen to know state of New York or any of our other surrounding states? Do they already classify or have a further inclusionary, you know, list of who would be a first responder? Because as we're sitting here and I'm listening to, you know, commentaries from my colleagues and then what you're saying. And those of us who sit here who have background working in public safety with the first responders, it makes me think of nine eleven, and it makes me think of all of the public safety personnel who obviously ran in to try and help and save as many people as possible. And to your point about the dispatchers and the the trauma of what they are listening and trying to work through to help people. So I'm curious, and if you don't know, I mean, we can all look it up. But it it just brought a question to my mind if New York, especially with the first responder bill, if that is something that already exists.
Yeah. So I I was trying to find it quickly. So there's an O L R report on like on benefits that are received by first ex first responders. That is twenty twenty-three R O one two two. I'll send it to the chair to distribute. But there's a separate one that someone else asked for, like probably ten years ago on dispatchers. And I think that includes a grid of what other states do. And I just couldn't find it on my quick search, but I'm I'm pretty sure there's already an O L R report on this.
Yeah. And there's been some movement on dispatchers over the years of the PTSD. Admittedly, the public work side is something you've brought into the table that hasn't been part of the conversation since I've been here. So.
Though DOT is, you know, really leaning into these conversations, our state lost a state worker or on the side of a highway. That's like, you know, highlights the need for us to have these conversations. So I really appreciate the committee considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Representative. Appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, we're classic legislature. We're twenty-five minutes into the second hour of the of the hearing. So I'd like to welcome up Mike Dapkus, who has been before the committee before. And we're now in the public portion. So we're going to institute the three minute, then summarize. We obviously want to be able to give folks some latitude, and we're we're rigidly flexible here in the Public Safety Committee. So rigidly flexible. So Mike, welcome back.
Welcome. Yes, thank you, members of the Public Safety Committee. I brought some bear repellents. No, just kidding. But
We we keep a varied portfolio here.
That's a that's a these are what I'm about to show you here. These are all props. They're all inert. And currently, these two devices are what we call ground-based fountains, and they're legalized or they're legal in the state of Connecticut. The items on HB seventy fifty-four that, you know, we're looking to legalize are snappers, glow worms, spinners, confetti, party poppers, toy smoke devices, and also increase the gram weight of a consumer fountain in Connecticut, or what they call a sparkler still, from two hundred gram to five hundred gram. I'm just going to give you a brief background for the people that don't know who I am. I'm the owner of Dapkus, one of the owners of Dapkus Fireworks, and I'm also a co-owner of State Line Fireworks in Winchester, New Hampshire. We've been in the fireworks business for over forty years, and I'm also a retired police officer and paramedic. I worked on the Portland Police Department. I was a paramedic at Middlesex Memorial Hospital at the time. So for the past twenty-something years, when these items here were legalized in the state of Connecticut, we've never expanded the fireworks market in this state. And the reason why we wanted to to expand it was one of the holidays, the Diwali holiday, that used these type of ground-based items. So the Indians use it quite a bit, and, you know, why not expand it? These items are a lot safer or have less incident rates than what we're currently using in Connecticut now. We have a handheld sparkler that burns over eighteen hundred degrees. These don't do that. They all stay to the ground. They spin on the ground or just basically burn on on pavement, things like that. Presently, all these proposed devices, except for Sky Lanterns, are legal and sold in forty-eight states, including our bordering states of New York and Rhode Island. They're also referred to as safe and sane fireworks by many states, including certain portions of California. But I do have some concerns about this bill, and I really don't know where it came from. But this device, this device here, which is a Sky Lantern, and this is also inert. It was introduced into the bill this year.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
And, you know, we don't, we don't know why it was, but I would advocate to remove that from this. And then also line sixty-four of the proposed bill mentions commercial property. I think that we we mentioned about parades and fairs and things like that, but we're commercial property. It could definitely affect our business if towns have that in that this current statute. But I'm here to really answer any questions you may have about this this.
Thank you. Thank you. You you were here, obviously, for the state fire marshal's testimony earlier. Is it? Is there any response to that? Any?
I mean, I could respectfully disagree to what she said, because she's generalizing aerial devices also in terms of statistics. There are more burn injuries from handheld sparklers that are legal in the state of Connecticut than what I want to legalize here. And I think any official will will attest to that. So generally, most children and adults that that we see as far as injuries are concerned are from from handheld sparklers.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you for being here. So the legal one can start a fire just as quick as the ones that are banned right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from Representative Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Dapkus. Thank you for being here. On behalf of my two dogs, how much noise do the things that you're proposing to add to legalize make?
Hardly any. These little snakes, they just you place them on, you know, a hard surface like your driveway or something, and they just burn like an ash. A party popper just goes pop and shoots out some confetti. Snappers are probably the most benign, safe. These aren't even construed as fireworks in the United States. They're construed construed a novelty device. But unfortunately, if you get caught, and these are normally sold at parades, and they're sold at fairs, and they're sold at convenience stores here in the state of Connecticut. But these are in the same category as an aerial device as far as a penalty. But I I could attest to the fact that a one-year-old can use these safely. I've even my children have used them. I mean, I've set these off in my hand, so they're so benign, they just they just snap. I don't advocate that, but I do. This is a little ground spinner, and you place this on pavement, and it just spins with sparks. This is very popular with the Indian community, and it's one of their traditional fireworks. But again, it doesn't go up the air. It doesn't explode, and it doesn't make any noise.
And the things that you're proposing to be legalized in Connecticut, what do our surrounding states doing regarding these? Because I'm certain that these things are making their way into Connecticut already.
Yes, I mean, we have a store in New Hampshire, which I could honestly say that probably thirty-five percent of our customers are from Connecticut. And but they're, you know, they're buying these, but they're also buying aerial devices to bring it to the state. That's, that's an item that we don't, I'm not advocating here today, nothing aerial, no skyrockets, no firecrackers, no roman candles. These are just ground-based spinners, snappers, party poppers, and snakes.
And how much of a market do you think there is in Connecticut for these things?
To expand these, it would be huge with the Indian community. There's no doubt about it. I would say it'd probably increase our sales maybe about twenty percent. Majority of, you know, a lot of customers, though, they're, you know, they do go up to New Hampshire, and they purchase aerial fireworks up there and set them off illegally here in Connecticut around the Fourth of July.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The distinguished representative from Cheshire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Hi, thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon.
I have a few questions for you. You had said that sparklers burn at eighteen hundred degrees. And then you mentioned that there were something out, there's something else you had there that they burn on the ground. Which was the one that you said that burned on the ground?
This is the, there's two, two items here that, really three that could be used on the ground. This is the ground spinner that just spins like a top, the sparks probably, you probably have a maybe eighteen-inch diameter of sparks.
So let's then talk about that then, because I know the snappers, I used to use those all the time. I love them, right? And no, I would not recommend putting them in your hands. That could hurt you, right? So you said that sparklers burn at eighteen hundred degrees, that those, quote, burn on the ground. Do you know at what temperature they burn on the ground?
These probably, they could be, as far as the sparks are concerned, anywhere from probably six to eight hundred degrees, but.
The sparks go beyond?
This device here, probably within a twelve-inch to a sixteen-inch diameter. And you have to use them on hard pavement, though.
So if, if a child, if we're at a party or something, and a small child were to run up and try to grab it because it's spinning on the ground, that eight hundred degrees could potentially burn them?
Yeah, if they were unsupervised.
And then you had used the term inert to describe some of those. I'm assuming that inert, you're actually meaning the actual definition of no chemical reaction?
There, well, there's no explosive or chemicals in that. These are for demonstrative purposes.
So they are still, oh, you're saying the ones you brought were inert? Okay, because that didn't make sense to me, I thought you were saying, like, well, then how does that work? Okay, so, you know, you had mentioned that these were, you know, more innocuous than sparklers. And I have worked for years with Connecticut Children's Hospital in talking about safety hazards during the summer, and sparklers are always really at the top of our list. We do see that there are a lot of injuries that are brought in. And then the Injury Prevention Center believes that sparklers should not be legal. I agree. I don't think sparklers should be sold in the state of Connecticut. And my concern is, is that coming here and looking at the, at these and talking about them, you know, you had said that they, that the ones that burn on the ground will still emit sparks for twelve to eighteen inches past the spinning item and burn at six to eight hundred degrees. These are things that I think still put children, specifically small children, really at risk. And I have been a supporter of not allowing fireworks to be legal in any capacity here in the state of Connecticut. And one of my, like, biggest concerns is if we're not going to change the law so that these items are illegal, I have a real concern about opening the law to make things that are, that could potentially hurt a child, to bring them under the fold of the law. So do you have any data that shows whether or not those items that you are specifically asking for, whether or not they have provided any or been the cause of any injuries of children around the country?
They're, they're listed as novelties in the Consumer Product Safety Commission. And if you look at their injury data, sparklers topped the list at twelve hundred. And I agree with you, sparklers, I mean, we have to instruct people on how to use them. There's, oh, they're safe for the children. I would rather, I'd love to sell them snappers, rather a sparkler. But on the CPS injury data, it's twelve hundred for sparklers, two hundred for novelties. It's kind of ambiguous, because novelties covers a broad area of of ground-based type fireworks. It boils down to supervision. I mean, I have some photos here, if you'd like to take a look at them, of a recent Diwali celebration that we supplied a temple during the drought, and it was, it was, you know, the fire department was there, they had fire extinguishers or whatever. But the area where it's covered, littered with Connecticut ground-based devices, you know, these devices right here, and some of these that made their way into the celebration. There was not one injury, nor one fire with this. I'm not saying it can't happen. But what we see after forty years of doing this, and twenty-five years of retail, and running a New Hampshire store in a Connecticut location, it's education, educating the public when they come there, you know, passing out the safety flyers. I don't know, my partner, my son, myself, how many times we've told parents, no, sparklers are dangerous for the kids. Use a ground-based device, light it away from them, and everybody stands by. You don't go near it.
So you bring up a really good point. Would you be supportive of adding to this legislation that any sparklers that are sold in the state of Connecticut come with some information about the dangers associated with sparklers and children?
I have no issues with that, because we have that in our New Hampshire regulations.
And how is that done? Is that, is that on the packaging?
It's on the packaging, and if it's not on the packaging, like in New Hampshire, if it's not on the packaging, you have to hand out a safety flyer. If you can't fabricate or make a safety flyer, the state of New Hampshire, the Fire Marshal's Office have already made these safety flyers for the consumer.
Which is great, and I hope that the good chairs would consider that in substitute language. And just one final question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to do so. Those ground-based, and actually the sparklers, is that packaging geared towards children? Or is it, you know, a lot of these things, it looks to me that it's brightly colored, which I understand why, given what they are. But would you think that that packaging is geared towards children to want them to use?
I wouldn't necessarily, it's geared towards children. I think it's geared more towards a celebration, you know, and that's, that's the way the Chinese artists brought it out. I mean, it's clearly stated on them, you know, there's warnings, but how many of us actually read warnings? You know, again, it boils down to additional instructions, one-on-one with the consumer, you know, explaining to them. And like I said, I have more than hair on my head, which isn't much, but how many times we have told, especially certain ethnicities, don't, children shouldn't have sparklers, you know, or if you do, put them in the ground and light them and have a bucket of water on standby. But let's say, you know, we navigate a ground-based fountain before a sparkler. Would I love to, I'd love to see snappers legalized, because kids have a blast with them. I mean, not literally, but they have, they have, they have a good time with them, you know?
I do agree with you, and I honestly see no problem with the snappers. I know that you've had experience with fireworks for a number of years. I've had experience with parenting for fifteen years, and I will tell you that if you do a ground-based, something that emits sparks, unless you have your hand on a small child, they are going to run towards that. So I do continue to have concerns with even a ground-based fountain. I have concerns with sparklers, but there are some of those things, and I even believe you used the word innocuous, which I agree with on some of those items. So I just want to be on record as stating that I think the items listed need to have a review. But I do, in fact, agree with you that you as being a responsible business owner, that you agree with handing this information out, and you try to educate your consumers. But many of the tents, maybe that you're going to that pop up in a parking lot, they're not going to do that. And so to make that education as part of the law, I'm glad to hear that you would support that. And I would just want to be on record saying I support that as well.
Thank you, Representative. You certainly can take the representative out of the children's committee, but you can't take the children's committee out of the representatives, so. Any other questions for, go ahead, Mr. Representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I too am a big fan of snappers. I am not a big fan of Sky Lanterns, however. So you would indicate earlier that you would like us to amend that bill to remove them, right?
Yes, I don't know where it came from. I know last year, we had, this is the same exact bill that passed committee last year. Where the Sky Lanterns came in from, I don't know. We didn't advocate it. I don't think there's a place for them in Connecticut, really anywhere, but I know in New Hampshire, you know, they are sold up there, but the way it was passed up there was they're tethered. I don't think most people even know what the terminology of tethered means. We have to explain that to them, but no, that should just be taken off.
Okay, I just wanted to get some confirmation on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Perhaps we should all move to the roof of the parking garage, and you can demonstrate all this stuff. Seeing nothing else, thank you for your testimony. Next, I'd like to welcome Chaz, the treasurer of the Friends of Connecticut Sportsman. Well, welcome, sir. Floor is yours.
Chaz Catania, Treasurer, Friends of Connecticut Sportsman. We advocate for the rights of hunters, fishermen, trappers, and recreational shooters in Connecticut. Here to urge your support for two bills, seven zero five two, titled Large Capacity Magazines, and seven zero five one, and that concerning black bear management. As for the magazine bill, I'd like to point out that fifteen rounds, going from ten rounds, which is currently to fifteen rounds, it's not really a large-capacity magazine. It's actually more of a standard-capacity magazine. That's the magazine size that comes with, I would venture to say, most self-defense handguns. I think it's a good step in the right direction. I think limiting magazines to ten rounds is unnecessary, doesn't increase safety, and actually can put people using firearms for self-defense at additional risk. With regard to the black bear management bill, what you heard from D E E P earlier was a masterclass in how to deal with black bears. I've been hunting since I was a child, hunted black bears in a number of states. And one of the most significant things that I can, I can get across to you is that the bears in Connecticut don't act like wild bears in the other states where I've seen them. I've hunted around bears in Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and New York, and New Brunswick, Canada. And bears in those places almost always, almost a hundred percent of the time, run when they see a person or smell a person. The bears in Connecticut are, as Mason and Jason pointed out, habituated to humans. They're not afraid of us. And one of my biggest fears is that, you know, the right time to implement their plan and have a hunt was five years ago. And I think that even if we were to start it immediately, unfortunately, it may take years until the wild bears learn to fear humans, which is natural for them, as it is for most other animals. And for them to learn and teach their offspring, for the sows to teach the cubs to stay away from humans, not to look for food where they smell humans, not to look for food in houses and cars, around grills, bird feeders, trash. So, you know, I think it's terrific that this committee has taken up this bill for the first time this year. I think this is the appropriate venue for it, and I would urge strong support for that bill. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying. Can you just opine for a minute about the gun club ammunition sales? This came to the committee under the understanding that, and maybe you can frame it better for other members. You know, if you're going to a sportsman's club, and you don't want to bring ammunition with you, and you want to shoot there, you right now cannot purchase ammunition for use at that range during that stay because of law. Can you just talk a little bit about that and what that section of the bill?
A few years ago, and you'll hear, I'm sure, from a few other folks who are going to testify shortly on this bill as well. Few years ago, it became a requirement to have an ammunition certificate or a long gun eligibility certificate, or a pistol permit in order to buy ammunition. At that point, one of the ranges that I was a member of decided to stop selling ammo. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly what the requirement is to be allowed to sell ammo, but they decided that range used to sell ammo just for the convenience of the members and guests who were shooting, with the understanding that we're not selling you ammo to fill up your safe. We're selling you ammo to use here at kind of our cost. And as far as I know, that was the impetus of most places that decided to stop selling. I don't know whether or not there's a legal requirement for them to have any additional liability insurance or permission. But, you know, that was the point at which one of the ranges that I was familiar with and was a member of stopped selling.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thank you for that. Questions for members of the committee? Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Just around the other states and around up in Canada, is it, Senator Martin said, is it the blast, the noise of the gun? Or is it, or is it in that bear's senses that it knows that it's going to die? Because now I'm hearing that maybe that's just the, just the blast of a blank gun may terrify that bear and make him not come back. So is there, what's the difference?
That's such a good question, and I think the answer is it's some of both. Most people will tell you that, you know, if you see a bear, make noise, scare it off. I can tell you that that doesn't always work in, with bears that don't associate where that noise is coming from with fear and with danger. I've seen bears in Connecticut in my girlfriend's yard with dogs barking at them, people yelling at them, looking at you like you're a crazy person, because there's, they don't run away. In most other places, if they see you, they run away. If they smell you, they run away. If not, acting aggressively, or a dog barking, running at it, or somebody clapping their hands, or they'll tell you, you know, bang pots and pans together, make noise. And that generally will scare them away. I think that part of the problem is these bears don't associate where that noise is coming from, or that noise itself, with danger. So, you know, is it the noise? Is it the people? I think it needs to be all those things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Thank you for your testimony and your time. Next is Matthew Strasser from the C C D L. Matthew. Welcome. Floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon. Like to thank you guys for having me back so soon. I think it was just last week when we were here talking about the handgun transfer limit bill, right? I noticed today, there's another bill that will, it's House Bill seven zero five six. I don't know if I've heard testimony on yet today, where they're going to amend a couple of authorization changes where you can get more than three guns in a month if you belong to maybe a new facility. I noted that, and I'd like to take a conversation from last week to this week, hopefully.
So I think that, I think that bill is officially up next week, so.
It's today, twenty-seventh, right? Oh, the bill that we talked about last week. Okay, I apologize. Anyway, today I'm here to talk about House Bill seven zero five two. I spent some time looking through the hundreds of testimonies submitted for this bill, and I'm not surprised with what I'm seeing. At my last count, just a few minutes before this hearing started, there were nearly forty times the written testimony in support of this measure than opposing it. I think that that fairly reflects the temperature of firearm ownership today in Connecticut. House Bill seven zero five two redefines what the state considers a large-capacity magazine. Until twenty thirteen, the state didn't have a definition for large-capacity magazine. The term is made up by a legislative body, not this one, you know, another one, and it doesn't exist in the firearm industry. The vast majority of magazines in Connecticut that Connecticut banned are not even close to what a gun owner would consider large. In most cases, they're standard-capacity magazines by definition, because they are the standard-sized magazine that comes with a particular firearm. The industry had to adapt, making blocks or otherwise altering them to fit within the new laws. An unfortunate byproduct of the current magazine restrictions is that used firearms from other states are increasingly difficult to transfer into the state. And a funny thing happens. The number of firearms in circulation across the country actually increases as somebody buys a new compliant gun in the state of Connecticut. Submitted to written testimony is, you'll see Commissioner Higgins' opinion, where he says the state cannot increase the increased workload of the paperwork required if this bill is passed. I find that unfortunate for his department, but I don't think that the convenience of workload should have any weight when it comes to someone's constitutional rights. I find that unfortunate for his department, but I don't think that the convenience of workload should have any weight when it comes to someone's constitutional rights. Personally, I don't believe this bill goes far enough. Magazines have been recognized as arms, and it is a shame that it will take litigation to correct something so easily fixed by legislation. Orla released a lot of data on firearm offenses, and it overwhelmingly shows that current magazine laws aren't stopping illegal firearms, or aren't stopping illegal firearm owners from committing crimes, while putting legal gun owners at risk. Just last week, a police officer was shot in Waterbury with a man that had two so-called large capacity magazines. The only people at risk with these restrictions are the ones that are armed with legal firearm magazines. Again, thank you for your time this afternoon, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. And I stand corrected, the bill you were referencing is on today's agenda as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
It, it all runs through our mind, all these bills.
There's quite a few of them.
Can you just clarify, from a very technical sense, that if you were to go and try to purchase a new firearm now, to find one that is Connecticut compliant, right, which was the ten rounds, is not the norm? Can you just kind of talk a little bit about the fifteen verse ten verse, what's available and what's standard, I guess, across the country?
Being that we're fifteen, or fourteen, sorry, twelve years into that law, that was twenty thirteen, I believe. The industry has, in my opinion, done a pretty decent job of adapting. You'll see a lot of firearms where in, say, New Hampshire, they're sold with a seventeen round magazine or a fifteen round. Six hour, you'll see a lot of them with twelve, but they're fifteen here. So, or sorry, ten here. So, if you, this is probably more of an effect for used guns, where there is a very large market for. It's, I didn't really realize that until kind of recently, but some people move in and out of firearms faster than like cars, you know, and it's national. So, there's websites for stuff like that. Everything's done through FFLs, the way that, you know, shipped through an FFL into an FFL. So at this point, maybe that's not as big of a concern if you're going to buy a new firearm. Because everything sold in Connecticut is obviously compliant.
Okay. Well, that's very helpful to us. Questions for members of the committee? Representative Howard?
Hi, Matt. Hey, thanks for being here. You know, you work in this field a lot. So, there's a lot of comparisons made to other states. Well, other states have fifteen, other states have twelve, other states have ten. Do you know of any other state that requires a fingerprint-supported background check just to buy a bullet?
Maybe California. I think they got some crazy stuff going on right now. That is very isolated. It's, for purchasing ammunition, it's, I mean, you need a firearm to use it, you know, so it's not really that regulated across the country.
So in Connecticut, you can't buy a bullet unless you have a fingerprint-supported background check and an eligibility certificate, right?
Yeah, and all the financial obligations that go along with that as well.
Right, the financial obligations you have to pay to exercise your right under Article One, Section fifteen of our Constitution.
Right, yeah. And there are people who are firearm owners previous to these laws that required you to have eligibility certificates. You used to be able to buy a pistol as long as it didn't leave your house. The permit was to carry. So, there are people that own firearms that cannot remain proficient with them, which it actually becomes a firearm safety issue. You know, owning a gun and not being able to take it to a range and use it and shoot it ends up working the other way, where you're, now you're in possession of a gun and you don't, you know, enough proficient with it.
And it takes time to load a magazine, right?
It does take time to load a magazine. So, and your thumbs feel it too, once you get towards those last couple of rounds, you know, we all know that.
So, what I'm driving at is the, and you tell me if you disagree with me. I think that we do a outstanding job in this state of ensuring to the best that we can legally. Certainly, people commit crimes, and we know that. People who legally obtained firearms, ammunition, magazines, have gone through extensive background checks before they could even purchase anything. And then to turn around and tell those folks after they did that, that, well, we don't trust you with a fifteen round magazine, we want you to put a plug in your magazine to make it Connecticut legal, so that you can only load ten at a time, especially, you know, this time of year. I take my boys to the range all the time, but, you know, it gets dark, and you can't shoot after dark. I mean, I don't like to take them to the indoor range. I don't think it's safe for them. Open that can of worms, but, you know, the breathing and whatnot. You know, it kind of limits our time by half, and it's frustrating. So, would I be correct in saying, look, you know, if we're going to compare magazine size to other states, we need to talk about what we do to limit who can buy anything in the first place and say, okay, we've put our residents through this rigorous process that they've gone through trainings and fingerprint-supported background checks, et cetera. You know, maybe, maybe we don't necessarily have to be as stringent on things like magazines like every other state. Would you agree?
Absolutely. And, and you can kind of look through all OLR data, and it'll support exactly what you're saying. So, I referenced earlier a report that was issued in twenty twenty-three while we were here during the last governor's bill. And there are, there are two types of illegal magazine possession. There's possession of, you know, a high-capacity magazine, and there's illegal possession of a declared high-capacity magazine. And that's, you know, where somebody who declared their magazine is in possession of it, you know, loaded over ten rounds while he's carrying it, or it's loaded between, like, you could have the declared magazine if you did it before twenty thirteen. However, you can't bring it to the range loaded, you know, so those arrests are virtually like non-existent versus the couple hundred, you know, maybe three hundred you see a year. So, what that points to is the people that are going through what you're saying, they're not committing crimes, they're not out there violating the law, and they're just trying to have a good time with their kids.
Right, so if I can summarize what you're saying, as I heard it correctly, the people that are following the law, even if they own current high-capacity magazines up to thirty rounds, which if prior twenty thirteen,
Could be more than thirty rounds.
Right, right. Not too many of those around, but correct. So, are those who are legally in possession of those magazines are still following the laws regarding those magazines? In other words, they're not loading up to fifteen and carrying them around. That's what the OLR report would suggest. And the Chief State Attorney's Office arrest reports would suggest, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the committee? Representative Lindahan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Hi, thank you for being here today.
Hey, good morning or afternoon now.
It is. So, you had mentioned something in your testimony that's been sticking with me. And please correct me if I'm getting it wrong, because I'd never heard this before, that the by limiting the number of the capacity in Connecticut to ten has inadvertently put more used weapons out across the country because it limits interstate sales. Is that what, is that what?
I mean, that's entirely possible. You know, I couldn't back that up with data, but, you know, as an enthusiast, there are often times where I'm shopping online across the country looking for a particular firearm, and in order to get it here, the seller would have to keep the magazines over there, or it would be shipped here and then brought up to Connecticut standards, which is usually, by the time you spend the money on doing that, you're just better off buying a new one.
Can you explain it to me? Because I don't get it. So, if you have a capacity, if you have a clip?
Sure, magazine.
I know they're laughing at me because I don't know what the heck I'm talking about, but this is good for people who also don't know what.
I agree, yeah.
So you've got the one that is fifteen, and you're like, I want to buy, I'm in Connecticut, I want to buy it. There's, for lack of a better term, a doohickey you could put in it to make it only ten?
I'm going to go on the record and say there is a doohickey that you could put in there, yes.
And what does that cost?
So, generally, I mean, most people will pay a gunsmith to do it. I don't know off the top of my head. I generally purchase compliant magazines.
It's not like a, like a plastic thing or something that you put in?
It certainly is.
But it has to be affixed inside the magazine?
It does, and it cannot be removable by the person. So, you want a gunsmith to do it, because if it was as easy as taking it in and out, well then, you know, you would just take it out.
I get that, and so I'm learning so much today. I appreciate it.
All right, I'm glad to be here then.
But, I see where you were coming from, thinking that because if it's not compliant here, then someone would have to buy a new weapon that would be compliant, so there isn't that purchase of the old weapons. And the law had no grandfathering?
Which?
I should know this, and I apologize.
No, it's okay. So, the twenty thirteen law, you could grandfather firearms that you, or magazines that you already owned. And actually, I'm kind of glad you brought this up. So, in twenty twenty-three, I think it ended up being House Bill six eight five nine, which was a fix-it bill during the session, where they did open up another magazine registration period for those that legally owed them previously to twenty fourteen. So it wasn't like you could have snuck something in there, you know? But, and I think it was SLFU created the forum to do so in August, but never actually distributed it. So if you didn't, if you weren't doing what I'm doing and you weren't really in the know, you didn't know that that window existed.
Okay. And that window has now closed?
It was, effectively, it was only like three weeks long, and two of those weeks, SLFU was closed for the Christmas break. So, it was really tight. I mean, we did work towards getting it in, and it was very specific, too. It wasn't like you could have illegally acquired something after twenty fourteen and snuck it through. You know, this had to be done properly. So there was another chance for those people that didn't know about it then. That's another problem we run into often, is that like even with that six, 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 seven bill from twenty twenty-three, we're still explaining to people that, hey, by the way, you didn't read it, you didn't know about that? You know, awareness is huge.
I always find education and awareness is a necessary component. And my final question is then, if theoretically, I know that you don't have data to back it up, but it does kind of make sense that it might put more guns around the country, right, because it would limit some cross-state. But, you're also saying that the reduction of capacity to ten actually allowed for less guns in Connecticut.
I mean, I would buy the gun anyway. I don't know what the next person would do, you know. Where I'm going to get it is a Connecticut resident, and to the number of guns in the state probably hasn't changed in my example. I'm either going to buy it from out of state or from my local gun store.
Thank you very much for taking some time to talk me through this.
Yeah, yeah, anytime, really. I'm actually a district over, so if you wanted to have this conversation anytime. Right on. Thank you.
For the record, Representative, we were not laughing at you until you said doohickey. That was the point laughter broke up. Representative Pohl.
Hi, Matt. How are you?
Hey, nice to see you.
Thanks for your testimony. How does this bill strike a balance between public safety and the rights of responsible, law-abiding firearm owners?
Right on. Thank you very much for the question.
You're welcome.
So, I think it would do literally that, is create a balance. Because what, what I would really advocate for on any other day is the removal of any restrictions on magazine capacity. I don't necessarily think they directly equate to public safety. But by almost making the concession to go from ten to fifteen for us, instead of looking at something like a thirty-round magazine that's standard in most rifles now, it would create a balance on our part, while also, I think it would add to public safety, where if anyone was ever in a situation where they'd have to be involved in what we call a DGU or a defensive gun use incident, the person might have a better chance of coming out of it on top when you're looking at a criminal who's probably carrying what you call an LCM anyway. So the people that are committing bad crimes or violent crimes are generally already in possession of these kinds of things, while the person that was trying to fight for their life is reloading. So, I think this is, this could be a good balance. But that's not to say that you won't see me next year pushing for thirty.
Thanks.
Thanks, Representative.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Representative Hall?
Just more of a comment. And it was interesting, and this is from a totally a female's perspective. My husband and I were shooting last weekend or the weekend before at a gun range out of state. And we're looking to purchase something for, from a different state and leave in that state. But I will say that as a woman holding a smaller gun, the one I was looking at was an IWI, and it was much more comfortable in my hand with a fifteen round magazine, and it gave me the little bit of an extension. So, from, you know, a different perspective, a woman's perspective, for me, the larger magazine was so much easier in my hand to control the gun and feel secure. I think that's a perspective that we don't talk about a lot in when we talk about guns. But for a female's perspective, I prefer the larger magazine for just simply holding and feeling more comfortable. And so, maybe you can talk a little bit about that and might fit in people's hands a little better than the ten round.
And I do believe you raise a great point. Generally speaking, people find that larger framed firearms are easier to operate and control. And that's a direct, there's a direct correlation between how large the grip is and how many magazines, or sorry, rounds are in that grip. So if you, if you have a firearm that has ten rounds, you're going to be, I mean, there are cer, I mean, I have, you know, larger hands, and there are some guns that are too small that have ten rounds that I won't even shoot, because I can't, I feel like I cannot safely grip the thing. You know, some of the larger framed guns that are designed to carry seventeen rounds but are blocked to ten are generally what I find myself comfortably, you know, holding on to. I mean, there is a lot of energy being dispersed, so it makes sense.
Yeah, it does. It's totally, and I think when this was passed back in twenty thirteen, it was done in haste, and I think we look back and, and I'm happy to see this on the agenda. It's a really important bill, and I think it really needs to get out of committee. So, thank you for coming today.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hall. Anything else? Seeing nothing else? Matthew, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next is Andrew Feinstein from SEEK. Welcome back to the committee, sir. In keeping with our broad array of topics today, we're going to introduce a new one, so the floor is yours.
I am not here to talk about bears or magazines.
And or fireworks.
I'm here on behalf of SEEK, a statewide organization advocating for the rights of students with disabilities in Connecticut public schools. We find SB thirteen seventy-four to be a horrifying bill. It states explicitly that we have untrained, unqualified security guards carrying loaded guns in Connecticut schools. What could possibly go wrong? Look, our preference would be to have no guns in schools. If we must, we would accept having badged, post-certified police officers on duty able to carry guns in schools. The notion of superannuated prison guards and department store detectives roaming school corridors with loaded firearms is terrifying. If the legislature continues to believe that security guards can provide cut-price security in schools, these guards need to be trained as do SROs to be able to deal with students with disabilities. Security guards and SROs need to be trained in the nature and manifestation of disability, de-escalation and conflict avoidance, IEPs. The school-based discipline is the responsibility of educators, not SROs or security guards, and how to deal with students with serious disabilities during lockdowns. In short, we find SB thirteen seventy-four is introduced to be bad legislation and unacceptable. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have had numerous conversations over the last couple of years. At the end of the day, school districts are coming to us asking to increase the pool of people who would be eligible to serve as armed school security. And personally, I am with you on administrators need to do discipline, right? And they're looking at it from a very different, a very different point of view. Other than opposing various proposals that have come forward, what do you suggest these school districts do when trying to expand their pool of eligible and qualified folks to serve as school security? Or do you believe that there's no role for?
Well, my preference is.
Well, I mean, for the group you represent.
Yeah, that's right. Look, if we're going to have them, and I think that, I agree, the ship has sailed on this issue. We need them, we need them fully trained. We need them, you know, this committee's been really good at, you know, requiring training for police officers in autism and other disabilities. These are, you know, these are security officers in schools where you have kids with some serious disabilities, disabilities which manifest in behavior, and that behavior looks to be the type of thing that security guards may want to suppress. So, a broad range of training, not only in guns and gun safety, but also in dealing with kids with disabilities, I think is critical.
So, and it's interesting, this proposal actually came out of a very, very blue town that I'm not going to out them right now, but you would be shocked when I told you the town that asked for this bill to be raised. What do you consider the minimum training then for somebody who serves at armed security?
The bill contains, obviously, training concerning firearms and. The, the bill contains, uh, obviously training concerning firearms and, and guns. Um, okay. Uh, that would be part of it, but I, I outlined both my written testimony and just in summary orally. The type of training that I would want to see happen. I would want them, I want, would want these security officers to understand the nature and manifestations of disability. I would want them to understand the literature and the, and the approaches to de-escalation and frankly, to conflict avoidance. Um, I, I would want them to, uh, understand what the I E P process is about and. And what kind of accommodations and modifications, uh, of these students have. I would clearly want them to understand that school-based discipline is the responsibility of educators, not security guards or S R Os. Um, and then the final issue, which, you know, it really perplexes me is, is the, uh, is the shutdown issue. I mean, we have kids who because of their disability, when they're under stress, are going to cry and scream. And we don't have really good ways to deal with that issue, either during a lockdown drill or God forbid during a real lockdown. Um, and that's, you know, that's an area which needs a lot of work.
Do you, uh, do you differentiate between, for lack of a better term, a hardening of the external facing part of a school? And daily interactions with, with students or do you lump them all together?
Oh, I'm not against hardening of the outs- outside of schools. That's happened. Uh, you have to, you know, lock doors and cameras to, to, to get in. Um, I think that's probably, uh, oh, the most effective. Uh, I mean, nothing's really effective, but that's, 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 you know, we're just reducing risk. And I think that the hardening of, and the physical stuff. Uh, and there's probably more that could be done on the inside of the building on that as well.
Sure.
Um, at a high cost.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to find a balance between what we're hearing from. From school districts, both public and private, about their inability to find qualified. Um, and the right people, they're looking, you know, the ones that have talked to us are not looking to hire a Yahoo and hand them a gun, right? And say, you're now security or mall cop on steroids in a school district. That's not, but, but, but that being said. Um, they feel like our current law around it is restricting them. And if I'm not mistaken, any changes that have been proposed, your organization has opposed any expansion of who might be qualified. Is that a fair assessment of?
That would be a fair assessment of our position, uh, but we recognize where we are now and would, you know, if we're going to have these people, we need them adequately trained and. How to deal with students.
So if you're, uh, if you're in my seat, right, trying to find the fair middle ground, right, what is that? Or you're just?
Well, I, we, we just talked about the type of training that I think would be necessary to.
In addition to a post certification, in addition to prior experience is what you're saying. Okay, okay. Um. Representative Lenny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, thank you so much for being here.
Nice to see you.
Uh, it's, it's really great to see you and I believe that, um, you were, um. Instrumental in helping this committee pass legislation in twenty seventeen regarding post certification. Um, training, uh, for individuals with autism and how to work with individuals with autism. Um, that was my bill. I thank you very much for the work that you've done with me over the years on that. Um, and this, uh. Training continues to, um, be given, uh, as for credit, uh, for officers. Um, but I do think it probably needs to be updated. Um, and I, I appreciate that you have spoken about the need for that kind of training. Within the post certification. Um, my question for you is. We're seeing more and more kids under I E Ps and five oh fours. Which you have, um, we, we've worked on this often. And you mentioned that these, um. Kids often their response to anxiety, fear and trauma is misread as violence. In fact, we've seen that across the country where we have incidences of, um, children and young adults with autism. Who were fatally shot by police officers by accident. So I guess my. My question for you is I understand your position that this is inappropriate. I align myself with that position, sir. But is there also something that we need to do? To further the training that we originally passed in twenty seventeen? For S R Os and other officers who may come in contact. So for that training that is currently on the books, should there be additional training now that we are five, six, seven, eight years into this? And knowing more now than we ever did?
I agree with you and I also think that we had, we've got to expand the scope of it. It's not just children with autism.
Correct.
Who, who does, who, um, have, um, can, uh, manifest behavior like this. Now, you know, I, I would also like to see, uh, whether there's any data on the effectiveness of this. You know, I haven't seen a case of a police officer, uh, shooting a child with autism in a couple of years now, but maybe I just missed it. But I think, uh, I would hope that maybe we've seen a decrease in that sort of, that sort of, uh, uh, issue.
By understanding we have.
But I also would think that de-escalation and conflict avoidance are really the critical elements of there.
And so perhaps that training, uh, should be updated to include that. Um, and not only for, uh, children or, or young adults with autism. Um, but actually for everyone in that regard, uh, on de-escalation. Thank you. That's really all I have. I just wanted to get that on record.
Right. I thank you very much. As far as I know, there's no doohickey to do that with.
No, but, but apparently.
I see what you did there. I see what you did.
Doohickeys in the office today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Howard.
Thank you. Hi, Andy. Uh, sorry I did take a quick call, but I did read your testimony on this bill.
Thank you.
Um, and I think we're conflating a few things. So. Uh, a school resource officer and a armed or unarmed security personnel are not the same people. We, you acknowledge that?
I agree. That's true.
Okay. And I don't have it in front of me, but from years past. My, uh, belief is that in order to be an armed security officer in our state, you have to be a retired police officer.
I don't know as police officer. I think prison guards were also qualified for that.
No, as a matter of fact, we've had several bills to attempt to include. As a matter of fact, so we passed the law a couple of years ago. And there was a, a, a retired parole officer who was in armed security and lost his job because of the law that we passed because it. It, it says a retired peace officer, which does not include parole, which is a whole separate discussion. But my point is. When we're talking about armed and unarmed security personnel, well, I guess armed, let's, let's stick with armed for a minute. Armed security personnel at a school, that is a retired police officer who keeps his training up as required by statute. Um, for the purposes of, uh, being security for the students, right?
Oh, no, that's right. This bill would be unnecessary if that were the case.
What do you mean unnecessary?
Well, the bill provides for required training for armed security officers. And if they already have that training, why is there legislation being introduced? To require that training?
Because under a separate piece of legislation, they have to keep their Liosa, they have to go to post to get their. Um, their, their firearms training. We call it qualification. What this bill is seeking to do is say, instead of having, you can still go to post up in Meriden. But if you're Greg Howard and you retired from the Stonyton Police Department, now you're working at Stonyton High School, you can qualify with the guys you used to qualify with. Who that you would work with in the case of an emergency. So I guess my, my, my thing to you is I, I appreciate the fact that you take. And you could tell me if, if I'm paraphrasing this wrong, but you take exception to having armed security in a school, period. Is that fair?
We, we find, look, we don't love S R Os, but we find that acceptable.
Okay. Um, so all we're doing here, this doesn't address S R Os at all. Can we agree on that, this bill?
Look, I'm not sure exactly sure of that. I, I did the, the research on the legislation and definitions. I did not find that entirely clear. I would, I hope you do clarify that.
Yeah. So I, I, I will tell you that school resource officers are sworn police officers. So in other words. If you have, i- if I'm an S R O in Stonyton where we both live, right? And that's my job. I, I'm assigned to the school at the high school. But on Saturday, there's an open patrol shift. I can go work that shift. I'm still a police officer. I can go take that overtime and. Work that shift or I can work the Mystic Irish Parade or any other sixty events that we have right down the street from your house at any given year, uh, as a patrolman. If I retire tomorrow and I'm, I'm the armed security officer, I'm no longer a police officer. They are very. In this building, we tend to conflate armed security officers and S R Os. Uh, in, in ways that, that are not correct. S R Os are police officers, sworn. Active-duty police officers who are certified through post as a police officer who can go on patrol and do a lot of other things. And we, and we tend to conflate them and I don't know, I'm not, not you. I, I do question sometimes that some of my colleagues do that to mislead the public on certain things. And that's why I want to drill down on what we're doing in this piece of legislation. We are not adding any more armed people to the school. We are not detracting armed people from the school. What we're doing is we're making it more efficient for those who are already armed security officers in the school. To get training more locally because A, it's cost-effective and time-efficient. But in addition to that, they are now training with the people that they would interact with. Does that make sense?
I understand your position of that.
Okay. So that being said, I mean, if you're still opposed to the bill, that's fine. I just want to make sure that folks watching. Understand that we are not, this, this, this bill that, that we're, we're talking about here, one, three, seven, four, does not. Create any more avenues for armed security, just changes where they can get training.
We've seen a huge explosion in armed security officers in schools over the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think this legislation, it, it continues that expansion, um, in effect. Um, and in terms of our position on the bill, if the sort of training I outlined is added to this bill, we would not oppose it.
So I think what you're asking us to is add to the bill that the armed security officers have more training and deal with. Uh, you know, certainly kids with special needs, de-escalation. I heard you say things like that. You would add, you would propose adding that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
So my, my final thing, thank you, I'm sorry. My, my final thing is. I will just say this to you. In my, my humble opinion. Armed security guards working in schools should be there for the sole purpose of protecting those kids from outside intruders. That's it. Armed security officers in the school should not be separating fights in the hallways, should not be addressing kids smoking in the bathroom. We have deans of students, we have unarmed security, hall monitors, et cetera for that. I, I think maybe we're in agreement that the interaction between armed security officers in the school and the student body should be limited at best. That's just my opinion, but I'll let you respond to that.
I totally agree with you when we had correspondence on that when the bill, when legislation was on the floor last year about that. Um, totally agree with you on that. Um, and I think that line has to be reinforced.
Right. Well, I thank you. I always thank you for being here. Uh, I'll say on the record, thank you for your help last week.
Well, it's, it's great to be with you, uh, Representative Howard, and I do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Until we kind of came together, I was going to suggest we pick this discussion up at the dog watch and, uh, and then go from there, but, uh.
Um. Representative Howard seems to prefer the Dunkin' Donuts and Pocket.
Well, I, no stereotypes there by any means. Uh, thank you. Other questions from members of the committee? Representative Hall?
Just a quick comment. Um, when, when this whole original bill for armed security. Um, at the schools, S S Os came up years ago, um, it. The history, of course, it was generated under post Sandy Hook. And the bill itself, um, was kind of put together through a lot of efforts. Basically, I will say from our town, our town was one of the first to implement a plan. With S S Os in the school.
Right.
Sandy Hook mirrored what we developed in Enfield and still has the same exact plan in place that was put in place. With the, um, template from our, our town. Um, Rep. Howard kind of, uh, reiterated what I was going to say. The only armed security other than our S, S R Os in our school are the S S Os that are retired police. So, uh, we have had several bills come before this committee to expand that, that pool.
Right.
Uh, because some of the schools are struggling to find armed security that actually want armed security in their schools. So we have looked at several bills, um, that kind of expanded to re- retired military. Um, Rep. Howard referenced, uh, parole officers and things like that. So, uh, just wanted to clarify on the record because again, we don't want people thinking. We are putting armed security in our schools that are not, uh, retired police. So right now that's how our statute reads. Um, I agree with you on expanding the training. I think that's really important and I think it should be expanded exactly in the fields that you spoke of. And our other good rep on the other side of the table spoke of. So I think we can do a lot more with that. Um, but I think the more training, the better. Uh, I don't think it can hurt at all. So that's kind of what this bill does. It also talks about more training for the unarmed security. And that's a huge, um, that's a huge category that we really haven't tackled yet. So I would love to see a lot more training for those unarmed security as well. So thank you for coming. I appreciate. What you said and I certainly heard it. Uh, thank you for being here and all your advocacy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? And I'm always deeply appreciative of anybody in a bow tie, so.
Well, it's great, great to see you without a tie up, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Uh, next, uh, we have Dr. Walt Cupson, who is virtual. Doctor, the floor is yours, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Very good. I don't have a bow tie. Hope that won't work against me. So, uh, good afternoon. I am Dr. Walt Cupson. I am the outreach coordinator for the, uh, Connecticut Citizens Defense League. And dear Chair Gaston, Chair Boyd, Vice Chair Slapp, Vice Chair D G Van Carlo, Ranking Member Chicarella. Ranking Member Howard and all of the distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. I wish to voice my support of H B seven zero five two, an act concerning large-capacity magazines and the sale of ammunition. Now, why am I supporting this bill? Um, if we go back to eleven sixty, I'm sure that this has been discussed, uh, for years and years. But listen, magazine limits are quite arbitrary. They're, they're quite capricious. Why ten rounds? Why not eight rounds? Why not fifteen rounds? Um, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. And I, I honestly, uh, while law-abiding gun owners are always, you know, we're going to abide by these laws. Let's, let's face it. I'm not a lawyer, but the little bit of law that I've started to learn, uh, I've learned to understand that, uh, magazine bans or, or, you know. Crimes involving magazines, they're malaprohibitum crimes. They're not crimes based on evil acts. In, in the same way that owning a car does not make it a crime. Is there, it's not crime, a criminal act to own a car. It's not a criminal act to have a drink of alcohol. It's the action, it's what you do. That is the thing that is, is, uh, it's the thing we're trying to regulate. Um, and honestly, limiting round capacity just puts lawful gun owners at risk in self-defense situations. Um, like one of, uh, one of the previous speakers touched upon that fact. Um, if you look at the, uh, uh, the, the, the number of assailants that will, uh, in, in self-defense situations. They're often more than one, okay? Uh, when a person's trying to defend themselves. It often takes more than one round to stop that threat. Now, the, the number of rounds needed in any self-defense situation. Uh, tend to stack up. And, and really honestly, per the twenty twenty-two Bruin decision. There's no historical tradition of banning or limiting magazines, parts of firearms. Um, so on its face, Connecticut's large, quote-unquote, large-capacity magazine ban is already unconstitutional. Um, I thank you for your time and I would entertain any, uh, questions.
Thank you for your time and your patience. Questions from members of the committee? Uh, Senator Chicarella.
Thank you. And thank you for taking time to testify, uh, on the piece of legislation. Um, just a couple of questions for you. Um, do we currently have any legislation that restricts how many, uh, magazines one could carry?
Um, I am not entirely sure of that. That sounds familiar.
So, um, do you see individuals carrying more than one magazine?
Actually, now that I think about it, uh, folks do carry more than one a magazine. So I think, I believe, please correct me, I believe it is legal for people to carry more than one a magazine.
Um, I, I believe you are correct and it is legal. You can carry more than one magazine. Um, the point I'm just trying to make is, is you were talking about self-defense in the event of something happening awful and. Someone have to protect themselves or their family, even in their own home. Um, you know, individuals will have multiple magazines. In the event of something like that happening or possibly multiple guns. Um, but you talked about the time it would take to change a magazine and what that could do in a split second. If there's multiple intruders coming into your house. Um, so, um, you know, I, I'm just trying to process. Um, again, both sides of a piece of legislation and understand the pros and cons of it. And as we heard earlier from others that were testifying before us, um, individuals that are, are breaking the law. And as we heard earlier from others that were testifying before us, um, individuals that are, are breaking the law with illegal weapons um, are having large magazines. Um, law-abiding citizens, if there is some type of a, a, an arrest, um, it's due to either not knowing, uh, about the legislation, um, that passed and, and somebody is a, you know, law-abiding gun owner, um, wasn't aware of, of a piece of legislation is, is carrying a, a magazine that is, is technically illegal or they didn't put one of those, I think they're called a doohickey, uh, in it. Um, and, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, it's a concern of mine when individuals, um, aren't even aware that they're breaking the law. Um, a lot of the weapons that were purchased years ago, um, you know, they could hold more than 10 rounds. Um, and I'm weighing the pros and cons and I just think it's a common sense, uh, piece of legislation before us to support. Um, you know, i- if we saw a problem from the reports that came out that, uh, you know, law-abiding citizens were committing crimes with their weapons, um, you know, maybe that would be something that would say, maybe, maybe we should, you know, maybe not put this forward. Uh, but we're not seeing that and, and the, the, you know, the possible risk of somebody not being able to have enough rounds in, in the, in the situation of something awful like a home evasion, it just alarms me and I just think we should give that right, um, to our Connecticut residents. Um, we should support that. Um, and, um, you know, with that being said, I know that you, you know, do this every day. Um, you represent the association. Have you heard any stories or situations where the, the restricted, um, you know, magazine, restricted rounds of rounds in a magazine were an issue?
Personally have not heard of anything either, uh, through people I know or I, I'm sure I would have to imagine it exists. Um, and when I think about, you know, self-defense situations, um, you know, you bring up a good point. Um, uh, it, it, um, I, I actually will say that I, I have definitely seen, uh, you know, sort of almost, uh, YouTube videos that show self-defense situations where, uh, multiple assailants are there. Um, and that type of, the, the ability to put that many rounds down is necessary. And, and don't forget, you know, there's, things can go wrong, right? So, um, you know, a magazine can malfunction. Um, a round can malfunction. You have to rack the slide. Um, so when you're trying to defend your own life or the life of your family, um, having an arbitrary, uh, limit on that just doesn't make any sense. And I was actually looking at some of the O L R, I don't know if any other speaker has, has covered this, but I was looking at some of the O L R reports, the Office of Legislative Research, and I found something that, um, it, that the illegal possession of a declared, the number of arrests from 2014 to 2022, I think it was, the number of arrests for illegal possession of a declared large capacity magazine is far, far less than illegal possession of a large capacity magazine. And what I sort of inferred from that data was that, um, if you look at the, the, the X number, uh, the, 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 the people who are arrested with a declared magazine, I have to assume if they declare their magazine, they're all lawful gun owners until they didn't know about the law. When you look at the numbers of illegal possession of, of magazines, the number's far higher, uh, hu- huge disparity. What that tells me is that very likely, the largest number of arrests with a large capacity magazine were from felons who aren't going to listen to the law anyways. Um, and I just see this as really hamstringing otherwise lawful, uh, gun owners just trying to protect themselves and their families. So I thank you for that, that question.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time to testify here today. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, Doctor, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Tom Maloney. Welcome, Tom.
Distinguished Chairs Boyd and Gaston and distinguished members of this committee. Uh, my testimony actually is going to follow on to this previous discussion a little bit. Uh, there are however, two bills that I wanted to address, the first being 7051, the Black Bear Management Plan. I'll keep it short. I've submit, submitted written testimony. Uh, as Deputy Commissioner, Commissioner Frumble said, um, it's obvious that we're well past the point where something needs to be done. We certainly should celebrate any wildlife restoration. I've grown up outside. I'm a hunter. I think it's awesome that we have black bears in our woods. We just need to stop some of their behavior and a management plan will, you know, help to drive that. Uh, the second bill, uh, the magazine ban. Um, here again, I've submitted written testimony. I had a lot more details and citations in that one, so I'm going to kind of go more high level on that. Um, there's a few things that I think don't get discussed in these policy discussions and it is important when it comes to magazines. Uh, first, it's a well-established fact through a number of studies, including one by the CDC, that Americans use firearms for justified self-defense an estimated 1.6 million times per year. That's a number that shocks most people, even gun owners. Uh, the majority of defensive gun uses end with no shots being fired. So those are kind of key to some other things. There are other truths, though. The majority of DGUs occur outside the home and involve more than one assailant. 51% is more than one assailant and they more often than not occur in the dark. So just some quick math. If on the most stressful day of their life, a victim shoots as accurately as a trained police officer, which is about hits with about a quarter to one-third of their shots, uh, an average of two and a half effective hits are needed to stop an attack. So on average, you might have barely enough in a 10-round magazine to stop one attack. And we've already said multiple attackers is more common than one. Um, finally, you have to consider that's an average attack. What if it's not? Um, there is one example and I'll try and highlight it. Skokie Police Officer Timothy Graham was attacked by a subject after a high-speed chase. Before he could exit his car, the assailant, you know, launched at him firing, uh, unleashed 21 rounds from two different handguns while the officer was trying to get out of his car. The firearm, the, uh, officer was a trained firearm instructor. He was top of his game for being able to shoot accurately. He fired 33 rounds, hit the assailant 14 times, six of them fatally. Now fatally means eventually it would have been fatal. It didn't, it wasn't until the 33rd round that the assailant finally stopped firing at him. Um, so the idea that 10 should handle any average encounter has to consider that the average person carrying a gun for their self-defense may not face that average account, encounter.
Thank you. Uh, we appreciate you adding your voices. It's been a lot of discussion on this topic already. It's one of the benefits. You're going later in the day, a lot of the, a lot of the discussions come up already, but we appreciate you hanging around. Questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the committee. Hearing none? Thank you for your time, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, next is George Coyle. George Coyle. It's George here. Okay, I don't see George. Uh, Michael Navoli? Michael Navoli? Don't see Michael. Uh, Thea Alfris? Is there a Thea here? I feel like Bueller here, Ferris Bueller. Uh, next is Angel Navarez. Angel Navarez, okay. Kyle Garco? I don't know, Brian, is it something we said? Um, Philip Pettit? Welcome. Excellent. You're the next contestant.
The hot seat now.
Welcome, Phil. Appreciate your, uh, appreciate your patience.
No, no. Um, honorable and distinguished members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes on HB 7053. My name is Phil Petit and I am the National Director of the International Association of EMTs and Paramedics, which is just a fancy way to say that I am privileged enough to work with close to 2,000 EMS professionals across the state of Connecticut. Um, my members have asked me to come and speak overwhelmingly in favor of this matter. Um, the working group allows a critical discussion to continue moving forward in this state. We represent everyone from EMTs to dispatchers to communication specialists, whatever your title is. Everyone should be in the family of first responders and what that means and what essential status or essential work means, you know, our members need clarity on even that. So they want this working group. We think it's the right method. We think it's the right way to have a dialogue to open the can of worms and figure out what does that mean? So as an advocate, I can tell my members exactly what it means, what they should have access to and things like that. Um, and then last but not least, I just want to encourage a provider-level perspective on the working group should it come to existence. You know, we think their viewpoint as, uh, frontline responders would be critical to the, to the dialogue continuing. So, thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I couldn't agree with you more that this dialogue, we need to stop responding and saying this isn't this and, and, and sit down with it. Uh, just as a kind of parliamentary question, are you, uh, working with or affiliated with the, the statewide organization, uh, Association of Paramedics and EMTs that started maybe three or four years ago?
Yeah, so we work with them, but we're a separate organization.
Very good, very good. Uh, questions from members of the committee? Seeing none? I appreciate your time and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. Yep. Uh, next is, uh, George Austin. Welcome, George.
Howdy.
Howdy. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to speak in favor of 7052. But briefly, I want to also, uh, add my voice to strenuously, uh, speak in favor also of the, I don't remember the number, the, um, the firefighter stipend?
Yes.
Um, my grandfather was deputy chief of the Bloomfield Fire Department and he did quite well in his life. A lot of guys don't. Um, and you know, the citi, the citizens of the state of Connecticut are taxed enough already. So anyways, so moving on, uh, in terms of 7052, I don't want to echo too much of, um, my, of the, of the, of my predecessors. I'm also a CCDO member. Although I, uh, want to take another, another, uh, approach. I do agree that the 10-round, uh, that the 10-round limit is, is quite arbitrary. And I actually think that I would also agree that going to 15 is also kind of arbitrary. But in terms of, uh, something that's a little bit more personal, uh, something that hits a little bit, uh, closer to home, uh, a, a vastly overlooked component of 6667 was imprinting. In other words, uh, for those who are not, uh, familiar, what that means is if you have a concealed weapon that is essentially blatantly obvious to, uh, and not innocuous whatsoever, it's not really concealed anymore. And therefore would be considered open carry and therefore illegal. Uh, the reason why this hits home is I'm a big guy. I'd have to wear essentially a grill cover to carry, uh, I, you know, I have to wear, you know, a grill cover that would sufficiently, under the highly subjective interpretation of that component of that law to not imprint. Now, with that said, depending on what, what weapon I happen to be, I happen to choose to carry, uh, the, there is a scenario and I typically do carry another mag, sometimes even two. Uh, because some mags, uh, based on some models of pistol, o- only take seven rounds, some take 10, uh, et cetera, et cetera. You have what's known as side-by-side, which could carry up to 15, some lots even 20. The point I'm trying to make is, uh, in a self-defense, uh, scenario, 10 rounds might not do it, eight rounds might not do it. And if I'm already imprinting, me and my, uh, plus size of figure are already imprinting with the weapon, I would even, in this, uh, in this, in this hypothetical, I would be further doing so by carrying extra mags. Um, and that is essentially all I had to say on that.
Thank you. I, uh, hadn't really thought of grill covers before that. That's an interesting analogy. So, uh, appreciate your testimony. Questions from members of the committee? Representative DiCaprio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can, can you just go over what imprinting, I must, I missed that when you, uh, started your testimony.
So imprinting, uh, to paraphrase as a layman, means that if you have a weapon underneath, in, in order to concealed carry, it has to, you know, your weapon has to be underneath some article of clothing, or I guess maybe in a woman's case, in a purse or whatever. But if you can tell clearly that there's an outline of a weapon underneath my clothing, in this case, then it was, it would no longer be considered a concealed carry, but an open carry through imprinting and therefore then I would be not, not in compliance with 6667.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
And then, you know, if I had another mag, there would be the same thing, just on another side or just be more things that would be imprinting.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you for your time, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, next is Patrick Madden. Patrick Madden? Okay. Uh, Bryant Mercido? Mercado? Bryant Mercado? Uh, do not see him online. Andrews Jerkowski? Roger Nelson? Hey, there he is. Not a hearing goes by that Roger does not grace us with the presence. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a coffee card here.
I'm, I'm actually going to owe you a coffee at some point. So, welcome back, Roger.
Thank you. Uh, as we know, my name's Roger Nelson. I am the current Vice President of the Connecticut Fire Marshals Association and the co-representative. Good afternoon, Representative Boyd, Senator Gaston, Senator Chicarella, Representative Howard and distinguished members of the Public Safety Committee. I'm not going to really repeat of what heard you have heard from the state fire marshals and you've heard from the commissioner. You've heard from Mr. Dubcous's end on that. Um, yes, fireworks, yes, are dangerous, can cause burns. Unsupervised fireworks ignited and can cause blage, excuse me, I can't talk, blazes that rage out of control sometimes or whatever is witnessed in California, Hawaii, et cetera. As far as that goes. My emphasis today probably is on the sky lanterns. Um, constructed of a thin paper material lit into the air can go as far as 3,000 feet high, last up to about 20 minutes and no guarantee where these will land. They've landed directly on children, domestic animals, wildlife, livestock, resulting in injury and even death. And actually in doing research, cows have been killed after they eat the remnants of the sky lanterns. And it's, a lot of it's more of a wire cage down the bottom and that, that, uh, just doesn't pass through well. In Alaska, air traffic controllers have had divert traffic for sky lanterns. We're having enough airplane problems now as it is to even get into it. England had their largest fire, which is $8 million in damage when a skylancer had landed in the middle of a recycling complex. And so there's incident after incident, TikToker actually caught individuals launching skylanterns in the middle of a California wildfire. That, uh, many, it's not just the US that's working with us, many states. And I have this all in my testimony, many states and also several countries have banned the use of these or provinces within the countries have banned the use of these. Well, simply thank you for allowing me to testify and bringing up these issues and thank you for your continued support working with the fire service.
Thank you. Uh, did you, uh, you say TikTokers caught?
TikToker.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't peg you as a TikTok guy.
I'm grandkids.
You've been told, you've been told.
Grandkids, yes.
Fair enough, fair enough. Uh, Roger, any response to the gentleman from the fireworks company was here earlier? Kind of made his case. Is anything, he come up that, that particularly came to mind when he was testifying that you'd like to get out?
Um, just as we're trying to keep it the consistency that it is now, um, they do burn it a little, actually the spark, like they had talked about, the sparklers actually burned much hotter, especially the handheld sparklers. Not, at least on the ground, you have that. You usually light it, get away and get back, but when you're sitting there holding it, that's actually probably, as he said, more dangerous issue as well.
Are we getting any other questions from members of the committee? Uh, hearing none, as always, Roger, appreciate your advocacy and involvement. So, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Richard Souza. Richard Souza, welcome, sir. Richard Souza, welcome, sir. You sit down, there's a little gray button in front of the microphone that'll turn it on. If you could do that, that would be helpful. Excellent. The floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh my name's Richard Souzer. I'm from East Hartford, um testifying today in support of uh HB seven zero five two. Uh just a few things I'd like to say that. Of all the the gun control laws that this legislature's passed, no one in this legislature. Has ever presented any data to show that reducing a firearm's magazine size increases the public safety. Rather is detrimental detrimental to the public safety. I want you to consider a few points here. The national average hit rate by state police officers on perpetrators a crime is twenty percent. In Connecticut, it's eighteen percent. At the twenty twenty-two Indianapolis Greenwood Park mall shooting, private citizen Elijah Dickens. Had to shoot the mass murderer eight times to end the threat after the maniac had murdered five people. Mr. Dickens fired ten rounds, so his hit rate was eighty percent. What if his hit rate had only been as good as our state police? What if there were two mass murderers? How many more people would have been murdered while Mr. Dickens reloaded with ten round magazines? In twenty eighteen, Nicholas Cruz used ten round magazines in his AR fifteen pistol. To murder seventeen people at Marjory Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. He left his thirty round magazines at home. Why? Because it was easier to fit ten round magazines into his school bag than thirty round magazines. He could carry a lot more ammunition and do a lot more damage. Magazine size isn't important when victims don't shoot back. In nineteen ninety-nine, Eric Harris and Dylan Clubold murdered thirteen people at Columbine High School in Littleton, Colorado. Their largest magazine size was ten rounds. Again, magazine size isn't important when victims aren't shooting back. Last thing I have to say is that. Sometimes the magazines that were designed to hold, say, thirteen, fifteen or seventeen rounds. Can have feeding problems when that magazine has been modified to only hold ten rounds. Because it doesn't have the thousand of hours of research or quality control development that went into designing the original magazine. I don't see how forcing someone to defend themselves with a reduced capacity magazine that can jam. While the criminal is using standard capacity magazines that don't jam is in the interest of protecting the public. That's about all I have to say. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Uh any questions? Senator Chicarella?
Thank you for coming to testify. Just a quick question. Um you made a really good point. Um. You talked about the um they've been renamed to do-hickies, but I I think they're plugs.
Yeah.
That um reduce the amount. So if you have a fifteen round magazine, you put in this device. Um and it will only allow you to insert X amount of rounds. Uh and you stated that. Um they, do they have a higher tendency of malfunctioning?
There've been incidents of reports of malfunctioning.
Cause cause they're what, cutting the spring? I mean, you're you're basically.
You haven't to redesign the spring. I mean, you have to use Newton's law to figure out what the spring force should be within the magazine. And so you started out with a magazine, like I say, like say, take like a Glock nineteen, which holds a fifteen round magazine, okay? They spent thousands and thousands of hours testing that spring in that magazine at Glock. Glock actually has pistols that the the original pistols, that the first generation pistols, that they fire something like four hundred thousand rounds through it. You know, to test the reliability of the Glock pistol, but the springs wear out. So they have to do testing, all this testing. Now, when you just take out that that spring and say, well, we're gonna put this. Doohickey thing, whatever, I'm not familiar with the doohickey, but they're gonna put this thing in here and now we're gonna put another spring in here. Have you tested that spring as well as the original spring? Hell, no. I don't want to get down, I don't want to get down on Glock or any particular manufacturer. Some manufacturers have done a better job than others. Glock is very, very great. I don't want a lawsuit from Glock. But the 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 real point is that. There hasn't been the testing done. Uh there's only magazine restrictions in about thirteen states, something like that. What's the incentive for Glock to do all this testing that costs money? It's not free. To supply thirteen states? They they sell guns all over the world to private citizens, to militias, to governments. And they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, devote a hundred million dollars to test springs for Connecticut and New York or some other states. They're not gonna do it. They're gonna give us, we're gonna take the crappy magazines. They have to look at the market situation and we're such a small part of the market, that research isn't gonna be done.
Sure, and that and that that definitely makes sense. Um with a small market, they're not gonna put that investment into that and and take it away from, you know. Other things or manufacturing other types of of accessories or different style weapons. Um I totally get that. Um you know, we talked a little bit about the statistics about who is um following the law, who isn't following the law. And then you just made just another good point that just puts the the law-abiding citizen at another disadvantage. Not only is it a reduced amount of rounds and God forbid somebody breaking into the house, they're clearly gonna do that. They most likely have an illegal weapon as well and and the second disadvantage is having them utilize. A magazine that is altered and not tested thoroughly as the stock one would be. Um you know, so uh just it's a valid point and that's why this process is so important to to hear all these different facts. Allow us to make educated decisions and I hope we we do the right thing with this bill before us today. Thank you for for taking the time to testify today.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Hearing none, thank you. Uh next up, we're gonna go back. Uh Bryant Mercado, uh you're next.
Uh hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Uh good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the committee. My name is Bryant Mercado. I am the membership coordinator of CCDL and I am testifying in favor of HB seventy fifty-two. As many others have already stated today, Connecticut's ban on magazines holding greater than ten rounds does not have any positive impact on public safety. The Department of Justice found the nineteen ninety-four magazine ban had no effect on crime. Additionally, a study, a twenty nineteen study in the uh Journal of General Internal Medicine. Found uh did not find any statistically significant impact from magazine bans. The sky did not fall in two thousand and four when the federal ban ended and it will not fall down if Connecticut eases its current restrictions. Even DESPP Commissioner Higgins does not oppose magazine size um increases on public safety grounds. In his written testimony, instead, Commissioner Higgins's sole concern with the magazine capacity increase was the amount of time and paperwork. His department would have to process. The state police already know the size of all legally possessed declared magazines from the form DESPP seven eighty-eight dash C. Uh that every owner filled out to declare them. The owners of these magazines already legally possess them. Uh Commissioner Higgins's concerns uh don't make any sense. Connecticut's magazine ban is not limited to dangerous or unusual items. The law bans magazines that are exceedingly common, that normal people own in most other states. According to the NSSF, nearly half of gun owners in the US own magazines greater than ten rounds. This number would be even higher if it weren't for the number of states that banned them. Eleven plus round magazines come standard from the factory with most with most common firearms sold today. Um firearms that are sold um for the purpose of self-defense, the purpose protected by the operative clause of the Second Amendment. Nearly three quarters of magazines sold in commerce in the commercial market in the US between nineteen ninety and twenty twenty-one. Held more than ten rounds despite the nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and four ban. The law currently contains two exceptions uh for two types of magazines, twenty-two caliber tube magazines. And tubular magazines for lever action firearms. These limited exceptions provide little, if any, benefit to gun owners in Connecticut. In many ways, this bill doesn't go far enough. It still leaves intact provisions in the Connecticut general statutes. Um which ban certain firearms with fixed magazines that can accept um ten or more rounds. It also still bans magazines for the most common full-sized handguns in the US and standard capacity magazines for many rifles. However, HB seventy fifty-two is still a step in the right direction. Connecticut's ban is so restrictive as to include the factory magazines for most compact and even many subcompact handguns. As well as others for the most commonly owned firearms in the country. I urge the members of this committee to support HB seventy fifty-two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh any questions? Representative Howard?
Uh thank you and uh thank you, sir, for for testifying today and uh I'm looking at the commissioner's. Testimony that that you referenced. And if we change the definition. I guess he's saying that that it would need to adjust, would need to adjust the number of of folks that have them. I'm not. Sure if that's the case. Let me ask you this. Do you know of um? If there are a bunch of magazines that are in production or or that are owned. That are between in ten and fifteen? Do you you happen to know that number? No, in other words, let me ask this question a little bit better. I'm sorry. Uh if for for the individuals who who got a certificate for high-capacity magazines, do you know? How many of them are between ten and fifteen rounds or eleven and fifteen, I guess?
So I don't know that number off the top of my head. Uh the Connecticut uh State Police Commissioner will have um ready access to that information. Um because like I said, the um everyone who registered those magazines, they're going to put not just the type of magazine. Um but the number of those. So he'll already have that information. Um the main thing that's confusing about Commissioner Higgins's concern is that if say somebody had a fifteen round magazine and they previously registered it. If it now becomes legal for everyone to own, it doesn't seem like there's any action that Commissioner Higgins would have to take there. If it's already registered and it's legal, they're not um changing uh the status of anything in regards to that specific magazine.
Right, I I that was sort of what I was trying to drill down on. You just did it better than I than I could, so thank you for that. Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to get to is. Uh i- if I own a, if I own a twelve-round magazine now and I have a certificate for it. And we changed the law so it's no longer a high-capacity magazine, my certificate is, I might as well blow my nose in it, right? It's useless at this point, right?
Yeah, unless there's something that I'm missing here that I'm not understanding about the law. It seems like Commissioner Higgins could effectively just ignore those magazines that are registered, that are um between eleven and fifteen rounds inclusive.
Okay, I I'll follow up with Commissioner Higgins. I there there might be somebody here who can help facilitate that for me. I'll I'll stop and talk to her. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
For the questions? All right, thank you for your testimony. Next up is uh Joseph Montgomery.
Good morning.
Morning. Or afternoon, excuse me.
Afternoon, yeah, I know, I started here since about ten, so it's just been kinda going on and on. Uh didn't want to miss my opportunity. I had gotten a an email that it was virtual, so I wasn't sure, so I wanted to come early and ask some questions. Um I uh I'm a business owner in uh Canton, Connecticut. I live in Bloomfield, right over by uh Pennwood. Uh state forest over there. Um it's actually a break-in, uh two houses down from me, from a female bear that she was hanging out with her yearlings on our front lawn for a while. Uh pellet pistol, rocks, allowed the pans, whatever, both my dogs. Um she didn't care. She was hanging out. The yearlings were climbing in the tree. Uh they departed about an hour later. She broke into a neighbor's house. A couple houses down and then was euthanized. Um I I feel like I'm just kinda beating a dead horse. So many people have come and give so many great testimonies regarding it. Facts about the bears, you know, just three million acres in Massachusetts and they have, you know, double the amount of bears, but they still require bear season. We're one of only eleven states or sorry, ten states in the entire country that doesn't have a management season. The majority of those other states don't require management season because the population doesn't support it. Um I think they're incredible. I think they're amazing animals. I'm a I'm a conservationist, a sportsman, a bow hunter myself. Um and I think that their best place is far away from us. I think that we're doing a tremendous um inhumane. Um service to them by allowing this interaction to continue in such a way that teaches them and teaches their cubs and the next cubs and the next cubs. That um proximity to us does not relate to danger. Um over at my business in uh Canton, uh this is one of the reasons I felt that I had a unique position to come and speak to you today. We had a a large male boar, about four hundred fifty-seven pounds. He was weighed by deep after they picked him up. And uh he had claimed uh territory from a dumpster that was there. Uh my neighbor's a uh birthday place, so a lot of cake, ice cream, pizza. All sorts of stuff thrown in there. Uh bear can hammer down twenty thousand calories in a day. So if he doesn't have to go very far, he has water source one spot, bedding one spot, and he comes back to the dumpster and packs in seventy thousand calories in a sitting. Um he's gonna get real territorial about that spot, so he was running off other bears. And um where we're located, we're directly abutting to the woods. Um I have a jujitsu academy, so we've got uh classes for kids as young as four. A lot of the kids love to run around in the woods in the little area right there. We have a big garage door that slides open when the weather's nice. And uh we had to stop having that door open because uh we had bears pretty much almost inside the building. Um they didn't care about the presence of the people in the parking lot. There's a dance studio right there with hundreds of kids in and out all week long. You know, there are tons of businesses in this industrial space. And these bears will move from dumpster to dumpster all around this industrial spot and subsist on the food there. Um Canton PD, Farmington PD, beanbag, shotgun, everything you can possibly think of to run them off, all completely ineffective. Uh one morning I was leaving uh my uh early six more, six AM class and a couple of guys have notified me, hey, same bear's back out there again. So I try to do my duty to haze them as best I can and make sure that our interactions are not positive ones. I think that's the most kind thing to do to them, so that way they're teaching it to the next ones. Um and so I'm throwing some rocks, yelling at them, trying to get them out of there, and I was bluff-charged around the side of my vehicle. So I retreated back to the front of the vehicle. I came out the other side, um kinda almost in disbelief because most of the time. Um they've ignored me, but I've never had one that uh that contested my interference with the food source. And so he then bluff-charged me again around the other side of the vehicle, so I retreated back inside my business. Um came back out, he was still eating some trash.
Montgomery, excuse me.
Yeah.
Um would you mind summarizing your testimony or three minutes?
Three minutes is up. So, long story shorter, came back out to clean up some trash, so that way I wouldn't be in the front of my business. And I noticed the bear was about twenty feet away from me, right where uh Representative Howard is. And um I put down the trash can that I had with me to uh throw another rock at him, get him further into the woods. And he hopped down the little hill and uh came toward me. Um I'm concealed carry, had a pistol on me, um threw the pistol, he was continuing, and I shot him. Um so, long story shorter, if we don't implement some sort of a season, what's going to happen? Is that what happened in Morris, Connecticut is not gonna be a severe injury, it's gonna be a fatality. And then the public is going to take over the decision of whether or not there will be a season, because it will be out of fear and will be out of self-preservation. And so if we're looking at people that are untrained, shooting, discharging in public places, commercial places in their homes and their yards, inside neighborhoods. Um it's a bigger danger, you know, than just what was certainly going to be a fatality for that young man in Morris.
Thank you, understood, understood. Uh any questions? Representative Howard?
Thank you for being here. You know, I I always appreciate when folks make it in, uh e- especially when business owners come here. I I I know that, you know, that you have to lead your business to come here. Uh you own a jujitsu academy?
Yes, sir.
Right? So uh you have a lot of kids in and out of there?
Oh, yes.
So having that bear hanging around, was that fearful? Did you have families express a little bit of fear about that?
Absolutely.
Did it impact your business at all?
Um it definitely was unsightly when you would see several PD cruisers in the parking lot. And going through the woods with shotguns with beanbags, people weren't super excited about that. Um so, yeah, the trash, uh he took like a thirty by forty yard spot. And he would just empty the dumpsters and bring it into the woods and create his own food plot in there. Um so that was kinda not exciting as well.
And for the record, jujitsu doesn't work on bears.
Unfortunately not. It's what what you might see out there, um you know, on the memes, but uh. You'll wake up and realize that you're in heaven somewhere, you know, God willing. But um, yeah, I mean, it it was, and deep was entirely supportive, Canton PD was entirely supportive. Um because they understood what was going on, you know. They were almost in disbelief. The gentleman from deep said that he hadn't hadn't seen something like this and he's been there for ten, fifteen years. And I think maybe there was a little disbelief from him. He had asked where my shell casings were. He was in disbelief that I was standing so close to the bear, that the bear was coming so close to me and needing to discharge it. And where we were standing and where his body was, we looked to the side and and there they were.
Yeah.
You know, so it's an animal that mass, even just him exhaling and moving, snapping the jaws, doing the hissing. Um it was terrifying, you know. I'm a six foot something guy and he was not willing to relent from that space. When News Channel three showed up about an hour later and they were filming women from Massachusetts and more bears were in the dumpster while they were filming. And she explained that she had never seen them before being en masse, despite the super close geographic proximity to us. They have a management season. It's not just the gunshot. Deer season, the day after that opens for for the uh the opener for deer season, it's almost like all the deer we've been scouting before, they know. Somebody calls them, somebody sends an email out and lets them know. The turkeys, the five hundred foot rule from the residence, you'll see them all through your yard, all over the place. The moment it opens up, they're gone. They know. They're brilliant animals. They've persisted around pressure for generations, generations. And what's being taught to them is not only is there accessible food source and plentiful food source around humans. but there's no danger in in getting it.
Right.
It's more so than just getting in the trash. Now it's breaking into domiciles. With, when I had got into that incident, a friend of mine, we have multiple partnerships with local PDs for training for at our school, for hands-on stuff. And one of the gentlemen had reached out to me and said, hey, man, he works with Wildlife and Simsbury PD. He said we had five home invasions in nine days.
Yeah.
Five home invasions in nine days. It it's it's a four hundred fifty-pound bear. Even if I didn't shoot him, maybe he was just gonna rough me up and and, you know, and let me know, hey, this is my food, get out of here, I'm done. But I don't know, man, you know, a four hundred fifty-pound thing falls on you, touches you, grabs you. You know, we had a woman right on the Farmington Trail, an elderly woman that was with her dog, and the bear swatted at it. She tried to intervene, went after her as well. So i- it's, the contact is imminent, we've known that for years, but now a fatal result of the contact, I believe, is also imminent. And 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 I needed to come here publicly so that it could be on the record, so that we would know that if we don't create a high-pressure situation for them to do what they're so good at, they'll become ghosts. If they don't want to be seen, you won't see them.
Yeah.
My wife has lived in upstate New York for thirty-something years. Only bear she ever saw was a a vehicle collision.
Right. Well, I appreciate, like I said, you being here, um, and and I've been happening to notice that you've been engaged with everybody and I love when people engage with the legislature, so.
I appreciate it too, guys. Those, it's super encouraging to see what I saw here today and hear what I heard today. Um, I think you guys get a lot of bad flack, you know, a lot of things that don't happen, don't move within the legislature, and I was just so pleasantly surprised.
Thanks.
Um, that you guys are working and working hard, so I really, it's true. So I appreciate it big time.
All right, thank you. Representative DiCaprio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just uh, a camper in uh, New Hampshire, I noticed that the uh, dumpsters and everything is basically they're clipped down and everything else. Was that the case in this?
Yes, sir. What was happening is that first the bear would climb on top of the dumpster and he realized he could cave the lid in and eat that way. And then we found the puncture holes where he would just stick his claws in and just pull the lid off. We contacted every trash company in the state to try and find out who could provide something that was more robust. Uh, perhaps something specifically with metal doors or a metal lid. And their exact words to me was that the risk of injury or fatality from having a metal lid and someone utilizing it daily was so much higher than what might happen with a bear encounter. And so, and so that was shut down.
And just my experience in the White Mountains, just from our family and everything else, sure, everybody, once in a while, we would hear one of the campers, you know, we went up as a group and once in a while you hear one of the campers, oh, we saw a bear and everything else. I always got there too late and never saw anything, so it's just one of those things. We, it was very rare to see that or a moose uh, there.
Hundred percent.
You know, so.
They adjusted the pressure tremendously.
Thank you very much for your testimony today.
Thank you so much.
Further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have uh, Matthew Jones.
Good afternoon. Senator Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, and distinguished members of the Public Safety and Security Committee. Uh, my name is Matthew Jones and I serve as general counsel to American Emotional Men's Inc., which does business as TNT fireworks. We've been in the consumer fireworks business in at least some form or fashion for over a hundred years. Uh, we're based in a small town in uh, northwest Alabama. Uh, today, we pride ourselves on being the largest distributor of consumer fireworks in the United States. We currently sell our products in over forty thousand chain stores and roughly five thousand uh, temporary stores each year. Uh, we also own and operate forty-eight retail stores, some seasonal and some open year-round. We've been selling fountain devices and sparklers in Connecticut since two thousand when legislation was passed to allow for their sale. Uh, we believe now, as we did then, that these products are safe for consumers if used properly. Uh, quite frankly, we are not in business if our products are not safe. Um, we support House Bill uh, seventy fifty-four's efforts to allow for the sale of non-aerial and non-explosive consumer fireworks in Connecticut. Uh, we believe that House Bill seventy fifty-four would bring Connecticut more in line with other states that allow the sale of non-aerial consumer fireworks, particularly neighboring states such as New York, New Jersey, and Rhode Island. Um, we also believe these products uh, are safe if they're used by consumers properly. Um, and believe that these products would provide an array of other options for Connecticut consumers to celebrate their holidays, uh, including the Fourth of July. Um, the passage of House Bill uh, seventy fifty-four this year in particular would be timely as our nation is preparing, as you all uh, are aware, to celebrate two hundred and fifty years of our nation's independence in two thousand twenty-six. Um, that being said, we are neutral on Connecticut allowing the sale of Sky Lanterns. Uh, in our experience, the safety track record of these products varies. Uh, and as a result, we as a company have made the decision, a conscious decision, we believe, uh, not to offer these products uh, for sale. We would uh, welcome an opportunity to discuss subsection A two of House Bill seventy fifty-four uh, to clarify municipalities' powers to prohibit the sale of non-aerial and non-explosive consumer fireworks on commercial property. Uh, we are not opposed to a municipality being able to prohibit their sale at public events such as carnivals or fairs, but we believe retailers, many of which are our customers, uh, should be able to decide whether or not to sell these products from their commercial properties. And therefore, we request that commercial properties be deleted from House Bill seventy fifty-four. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is uh, David Wilson.
Good noon. It's good to see some of my uh, old colleagues here. I'm David Wilson, a retired state rep from di- district sixty-six. I live in the town of Litchfield. And I'm here today to support House Bill seventy fifty-one. And uh, good, good afternoon to uh, all of my esteemed former colleagues up here. It's good to see you and uh, uh, know that you're still working hard. I'm pleased that the legislature is taking time to hear from the public specifically about the public safety implications of Connecticut's past decision not to manage the black bear population. Connecticut has experienced a growing number of human bear encounters in the past few years driven by a hearty food supply and the lack of natural predators. To the extent that the black bear population continues to grow, encounters with humans will also continue to grow. It is critical that the state have a plan that balances the state's wildlife management plans and the public safety interests. I want to share with you my personal experience. It was on October sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two at the end of my last term as state rep for the sixty-sixth district. On October sixteenth, the grandson of constituents from Morris was attacked, dragged from their yard by a large male black bear. The attack left a ten-year-old with injuries including puncture wound to one thigh, bite marks on a foot and ankle, and claw marks on his back. That family faced out-of-pocket medical expenses of over four thousand dollars. Senator Minor and I advocated for the state's assistance for the family in December uh, that year. As it was so close to the end of the session and at the end of both my and Senator Minor's service, we do not know the outcome of our efforts. Uh, we never had a reply before the session was over. Uh, at last count available in September of twenty-four, there were year-to-date, and this is my Google source, and I know I heard a slightly smaller number uh, earlier today, but uh, Go- Google says there were sixty-eight home invasions in our state through September of two thousand twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-two, there were sixty-six, so you can see the increased trend. You may want to consider the potential liability the state could in- incur when a more significant attack takes place. Many states with significant black bear populations already use hunting as a means of control, and you've already heard that here today. For these and many reasons given in the testimony here today, please consider the passage of House Bill seventy fifty-one. And I'd also like to suggest that you take the time to read the testimony of a gentleman from my name, uh, my town by the name of Troy Kaiser, who's a very experienced wood- woodsman from Litchfield. Uh, his, his testimony was uh, kind of a little bit on the long side, but it's uh, well worth a read. Uh, thank you all for allowing me time here today, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative. Uh, any questions? Representative Howard.
Uh, Representative Wilson, welcome back to the the legislature and and not only that, but the 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 best committee here. Um, when, when uh, when you had that encounter, um, the t- talk to me about the the, when you're, I'm sorry, when your constituent came to you. Talk to me about like the uh, the element of fear that they had. Like, I think that that that's something that we really need to drill down on is, um, you know, it's not just the 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 encounter itself, but what happens after it.
So uh, thank you, Representative, for that question because I think it's very important and it, and it's, it was a very poignant. It was, it was probably the most poignant event that took place in my six years here in the legislature. Uh, one, because coincidentally, I happen to know this family. Um, I, they worked for a a very good client of mine uh, for a number of years. And as a footnote, that I'm not sure if you remember the story in the paper, but this was at the grandparents' home. So the, the ten-year-old was visiting his grandparents. They were in the backyard. His grandfather is in a wheelchair. So this ten-year-old and his grandfather in a wheelchair were in the backyard and this bear literally charged out of the woods. It wasn't just a wandering situation. The bear literally charged out of the woods, grabbed the boy and started to drag him off. The grandfather left the wheelchair because he could, uh, in the backyard, not on the lawn and so forth, control the, the wheelchair and tried to go after the b- boy and the bear and had a iron rod that he was beating uh, the bear with. And the neighbor fortunately heard the commotion and came out and and between the the grandfather and the neighbor, they were able to beat the bear off. They then went inside the house and the bear came back right up the ramp, right up the wheelchair ramp. So to Representative Howard's question, the fear, you just can't even imagine. And I, I, when I was writing the testimony, I had other things going on and I, and I thought about calling the the folks because I certainly know them and have their phone number because my concern is not even talked about, and that would be the the PTSD effect on both the boy and the family. Uh, the, the bear was euthanized that day by deep, um, which was appropriate. So uh, what I was saying at the time, and and of course, every year of my six years here, I put in a bill for bear hunt, which fell on deaf ears as always. And so I'm really glad that they've taken the approach this year to bring this to this committee because I think it's more appropriate here and it certainly seems like it's getting a much better hearing um, than some that I've seen in other committees. I was on environment for six uh, six years, so um, I hope that answers your question.
It does. And and you know, David, you 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 pointed out something else that I, that they may have been asked, you know, inadvertently brushed over in some of the testimony here today is that some of the the opponents of having a hunter control it um, have basically said, well, w- we would, i- if somebody needs to to shoot a bear to protect themselves, that's fine. Not everybody carries a gun all the time. Not everybody knows how to use a gun, and frankly, not everybody has the, the courage to take a pipe and attack a bear. Uh, so you bring out another interesting point in that, in that story with your, with your former constituent with a uh, with a wheelchair. So I thank you for it. Thanks for being here today and uh, always great to see and have you back. Thanks so much.
Good to see you.
Uh, Representative Lou.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, rank uh, vice chair. Um, it's good to see you, Dave.
Good to see you, Brian.
And yeah, one of the, one of the hidden secrets uh, in the uh, in the, in the legislature and something that you and Representative DiCaprio have in common is uh, you were both, you're both my uh, seatmates uh, in the chamber, so uh, it's uh, I know it's a secret you guys usually want to keep, but I uh, I do, I I I enjoyed our many late-night conversations and um, um, working on bills and uh, all of those um, very meaningful discussions, so uh, it's great to have you here. Um, I don't know if you had heard the testimony a little earlier. Um, and obviously very serious subject matter. Uh, what I was taught, I was asking uh, DEP, uh, the deputy commissioner and his staff, you know, as far as the um, our children at higher risk, you know, for, for bear attacks and, you know, that sort of thing. And it sounds like the, the uh, the, the account that you have, uh, this bear was uh, intent on attacking the child and dragging the child off. Um, I think he obviously was, was, was that, that bear was apparently was, did you get any information as far as what the bear's motives were? Do they think he was seeking his child out as a food source or was he as viewed as a threat? Do you know what the, and did you get any more information on that?
So I I do believe that the deep did an acropsy on the bear. Uh, they were checking for rabies. Um, I don't know the results of that. I, th- there was statements made at the time that indicated that there was some thought that that the bear could have been rabid because typically it wouldn't be a be- behavior that we would anticipate. On the other hand, who knows? I mean, maybe the bear was just hungry and saw a small moving object and and decided to go have lunch.
I mean, it's certainly, certainly very disturbing uh, that, you know, when we uh, we start seeing this in our state, we need to protect our children, we need to protect our vulnerable. Uh, his, his grandfather, obviously very vulnerable in the wheelchair, uh, and the grandson, um, simply minding their own business, being in their backyard and getting uh, viciously attacked. Um, so um, we need to, we need to take this serious. We need to start moving on this. And I, I know you come from the western part of the state where this is the biggest issue at the moment. And I I tell people on, in my side of the state, in the eastern side, that uh, you're our future. Um, as far as, and I think we heard that in the testimony today. I think it, we start seeing more and more accounts in the uh, eastern part of the state. Um, uh, can you speak to, have you noticed, uh, have you seen more bear sightings over the years as an individual being from western Connecticut?
I I would say significantly, um, we have bears uh, in our area all the time. Um, I would say uh, easily at our home on a weekly basis. Um, the gentleman was asking the question about the dumpster. Um, and the description, the, the last gentleman was how they jumped on the dumpster to push the top in and that's ex- I have two dumpsters. I have a recycled dump dumpster and a garbage dumpster on my property. And the bi- the bears would literally jump on the plastic top, cave it in to go after the garbage bags. So much, knock it in so bad that it would take me a crowbar to pry it back up to get it straightened out. And my garbage company did put steel lids on, and you are correct, they are very heavy. Um, but in fact, they learned how to open the steel lid to the point now where I have to use a big chain to chain the top down uh, so that they can't get the, they can't get that dumpster open.
Yeah, I I I recall um, when we were uh, uh, neighbors in the uh, chamber, you, you were having lunch with uh, some friends. You had a video uh, at, at a restaurant in your area, you're out in the back deck and uh, lo and behold, here comes a bear to the, the dumpster right there, is rummaging through and you know, perhaps if uh, he can get what he wanted there, he he's gonna pay you guys a visit. Um, and that's um, I mean, that's disturbing. Um, with what you're describing, would you say you've noticed this as more steady habit in the last five years, ten years in your area?
Well, I think five years is a, is a good number to look at. Um, I think it's become much more prevalent. Uh, you see them all the time. The restaurant you're talking about was in Goshen and the dumpster was no more than twenty-five feet. We were on outside dining. It was no more than twenty-five feet away from us and the bear. And the waitstaff says, now, you're gonna sit here, it'll be okay. Uh, the bear will come up, but the bear's not gonna bother you because they come here to the dumpster every day. And the bear came up and knew how to slide, it was a sliding side door on the dumpster. And then the bear goes right inside the dumpster, takes the garbage out, goes out in the woods with it, comes back ten minutes later looking for another bag.
Yeah, my goodness. Well, uh, th- thank you for your, for your testimony. Uh, certainly need to act on this and we need to do it quickly. So uh, thank you for those uh, those accounts. Uh, really thank you for working to really up to the last day on this, on this issue. And uh, you uh, really the last hour, the last day of your uh, tenure and uh, and uh, continue to do what you're doing now.
Right.
And um, sir, how I, uh, it's great seeing you. I hope you're enjoying retirement and uh, we look forward to continue working with you on this.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Further questions? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. Next up, uh, we have Robert Goodrich. Go ahead, Mr. Goodrich. You're good.
Yes, Senator Gaston, Representative Boyd, uh, Senator Slapp, and Representative Dijo Encaro, and members of the Public Safety Committee. My name is Robbie Goodrich. I'm the executive- My name is Robbie Goodrich. I'm the Executive Director of RACE, a youth organizing outfit that builds and uses power to fight for racial equity and social justice in our schools and communities. As an organization, we are actively researching, organizing, advocating for safe schools here in Connecticut. We believe school climate and safety are better served when schools are well-resourced, support students' access to greater amounts of opportunity. And are at reduced risk of becoming justice impacted youth. Police free schools and schools without prison or military like surveillance and schools that are free of armed or unarmed security guards. Are preferable to ones that are heavily policed by sworn law enforcement officers or their proxies. Currently, state law requires zero training for school resource officers before they are assigned to schools. That means SROs enter school environments with no credible qualifications or oversight or evaluation criteria that reflect their place, power. Or potential impact on school environments other than the ones agreed upon by police chiefs and school boards. This ambiguity has allowed some school districts to grow a school to prison pipeline that almost always disproportionately impacts black and brown students. Differently abled students, poor and immigrant students differently than their white peers. Now, our collaborative efforts with other youth organizing outfits across Connecticut have resulted in a narrative change here in Connecticut, as well as new legislation on school safety. Climate and policing that has significantly reduced school based arrests in places like Waterbury. It's hard work. Now, this bill is a step backwards. SB 1374 would allow non-law enforcement personnel to be trained on qualified immunity, gang affiliation, identification, drug detention. Strategies, use of force tactics typically reserved for sworn law enforcement officers. And doesn't identify de-escalation training, nonviolent conflict resolution, restorative practices, anti-bias training, or training on child and brain development. Let me more than suggest that this proposed bill puts tens of thousands of students at greater risk of being criminalized, overpleased and fast-tracked to being pushed out of schools and to do. Our juvenile or adult prison systems. And let me also highlight that school safety strategies and policing conducted by sworn law enforcement officers. Or armed or unarmed security has little, little impact in preventing school shootings, school-based violence. And doesn't have a causal relationship to improve educational outcomes. And in most cases, the opposite is true. Urge the committee to drop this bill and move forward with more traditional uh, strategies and tactics for school safety that actually have science and evidence-based. Practices to support uh, the end result that we all want, which is safest schools for every child.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Goodrich. Uh, just to reach out to you, we understand your position on on certain things. But our previous speaker, uh, I'm not sure if you had heard of Andrew Feinstein, he had made some suggestions where to help maybe make more uniform code, more training. Uh, would you be uh, supportive of any of his suggestions? That I'm not sure if you were listening to his testimony, but um, we're just wondering, you know, he even has admitted we're past the point of uh, serving the schools. But to better train, to better train, that's we'll be uh, supportive of that.
Well, I I think, you know, Mr. Uh, the the person who was representing SEEK, Andrew does a great job. And I I will say a few things that we are past the point where SROs are 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 accepted in our schools. As an organization, we do not accept them um, in our schools and we will always be fighting for police free schools. But this legislation is so badly constructed that it would need a complete overhaul. It doesn't address student rights. It doesn't uh, address tracking of investigations done by unarmed or armed security, armed security officers. It doesn't talk about what types of surveillance they would be able to use. It doesn't even have a funding or implementation mechanism. It certainly doesn't have an evaluation criteria, which makes any of this training go towards people who are not going to be able to be held accountable for their actions in schools. The other thing Representative Dijo Encaro that I'd like to highlight is that um, and research that we recently participated in with CT Voices. SROs aren't even required to have uh, annual training done on school safety. Those decisions are uh, by state law. Those decisions are made by school boards and police chiefs. And 91% of uh, agreements that we looked at. Clearly stated that there is no requirement for even for SROs before they're assigned to schools to have habit. So that this legislation is so poorly written and it would need so many additions to even make it the least bit palatable for us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, next up is Fred Chob. Fred Chob. After that, we have Hyde Harmon III.
I need to push the button? It's on, okay. Yeah, I'm almost deaf, so I apologize if I don't communicate real loud. But I thank all the members of the Public Safety and Security Committee for giving me this time. I'm here to support HP 7052. I want to express my strong support for both raising Connecticut's gun magazine limit from 10 to 15 rounds. And for allowing the sale of ammo at gun clubs. I believe this change is reasonable for the following reasons. Self-defense, personal safety, 10 round magazine limit can put a law-abiding citizen at a disadvantage in a life-threatening situation. In a self-defense scenario, every second counts. Having access to a 15 round magazine can provide individuals the necessary means to protect themselves and their loved ones. And also criminals who are determined to break the law, they don't care about capacity restrictions. They're gonna do what they do and they're gonna get them obviously by other means. So raising the limit to 15 rounds should not compromise public safety at all and instead would empower the reasonable gun owners. I shoot comparative trap in Connecticut and I have not seen a lot today about the the ammo side of this. And it's it's very common during the trap season. I'll go through like 300 rounds of 12 gauge on a Sunday at a competition. And I believe I shot at every single gun club that has ATA shoots Hartford, Andover, Bristol and a whole lot more. And it would certainly be very convenient. If you didn't have, I I bring 600 rounds more when I go. And people who bring less, if they go into a uh, a shootout situation or something, they don't always have the ammo. I'm kind of blessed because it's it's not as big as the impact on me. And totally unrelated to this, thank you for this, because I ran into a bear. I don't know if anyone knows what the Farmington Trail is. It's absolutely gorgeous. It's heavily, heavily traveled by people. I'm almost getting back to the start of the trail. And there's a woman looking at me about 100 yards away. And I'm looking at her and in between us is her big dog. She's just staring at me. I'm thinking, what did I do? Then the dog looks at me. It's not a dog, it's a black bear. And that lady was gone. She was out of there in a shot. So so they are, and that's an extremely, extremely heavily traveled path. It really is. It's a beautiful Sunday. Just to let you know, again, thank you very much, save.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Howard.
Not a question so much, uh, Ms. Chairman. But Mr. Harmon, I I just, I I love when you come here. Uh, you know, I I think you sit there and you know, you're a pipe fitter by trade or a pipe welder, I'm sorry. A pipe, a pipe welder by trade. You're a law-abiding citizen. You're you're just a great resident of the state of Connecticut. And and you speak in favor of these reasonable bills. And just really demonstrates to everybody that gun owners are just regular, frankly, some of the best people. I'm a police officer by trade. When I stop a car and and the owner has a pistol permit, makes me actually feel safer because I know they've been background checked. These are the good people. And I love when you come here and thank you so much for being here and taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Representative Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, Hyde, great to see you, my friend. Thank you for, thank you for coming up and uh, giving, giving your testimony and bringing the common sense to the building and uh, as you always do. And uh, thank you for bringing your sidekick with you as well. It's always great to see you.
Oh, yes. She's absolutely vital to me now.
And um, so I uh, you know, you you make a good point. I mean, as far as, you know, the uh, the the war, but I'm not worried about if you have a. A 10 magazine, 10 round magazine or a 15 round magazine. I know you're gonna be responsible. The the criminals, the folks breaking the law, right? They're not gonna follow it. Right? They're gonna, they're gonna, they can go for the largest magazine they can possibly get their uh, hands on regardless of what the blue book says. You're gonna follow the law. So we uh, we uh, certainly don't want to put you in a dangerous situation. Uh, put you in jeopardy in the ca- in such a case where you would need to uh, protect yourself responsibly. So I uh, I certainly certainly agree with what's trying to be done here and uh, certainly appreciate your your common sense. And um, you know, also I think the uh, a little earlier, I heard the representative from the 59th. Talk about how um, a 15 round, uh, 15 round magazine is uh, fits in her hand better. It's more comfortable uh, to 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 hold. Can you speak to that at all as far as would you, would you find, do you find it a little easier to to operate uh, than the, say, the poster?
My hand size definitely is a huge, in a handgun, a huge difference, really does. Big hand, little hand. And also there's a little weight difference there too. And you got an extra five rounds of ammo depending on the caliber, there's gonna be a small amount of weight there. So everyone's different, but certainly it can make a good difference in the way it feels and also means the accuracy of the shots.
Well, uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate the, appreciate the testimony. Appreciate the answers. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Representative. Uh, just for the record, what is the name of your service animal?
What's that?
What's the name of your service animal?
Oh, oh, that's Artemis.
Artemis. See, uh, the the good Vice Chair was too shy to ask, so I said, I'll be bold and ask that question. So. Excellent. Well, we thank both you and Artemis for uh, attending today. So any other further questions? Here and none? Have a great day, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Matthew Millerbrand. Matthew Millerbrand, I don't see online. Uh, next will be Annie Hornish for the Humane World for Animals. Welcome, Annie.
Welcome. Yes, thank you so much. Thanks for um, having this bill before us today, House Bill 7051. I'm Annie Hornish, uh, the State Director for Humane Worlds for Animals, formerly the Humane Society of the United States. We stand in opposition to 7051 and request that you protect Connecticut's black bears from a trophy hunt. This bill is unnecessary and a waste of taxpayer dollars because Deep is already empowered to do all eight items listed in this bill. They just need to do a better job at public education. I want to note that it's only been in the past two to three years that we've seen Deep make a reasonable effort to educate the public on preventative measures. Uh, to mitigate human bear conflicts. Prior to that, for many years, it's been a steady push of fear mongering and disinformation. The people of Connecticut have spoken loud and clear for many years now that they do not want to see a trophy hunt of our small uh, black bear population. Allowing a bear trophy hunt perpetuates cruelty and isn't in keeping with Connecticut residents' values. Trophy hunters cause additional mortalities that are never counted. Particularly on the orphaned cubs who die of starvation, predation or exposure when their mothers are killed. Trophy hunters can rarely distinguish males from female bears. Mother bears send their cubs up trees and keep moving to keep their bears, their cubs safe. Hunters often might not know whether she has cubs. Females spend almost two years taking care of their young. Unfortunately, Deep has a policy to kill orphaned bear cubs under the weight of 60 pounds. And that is included in my written testimony, their policy. The scientific consensus is that trophy hunting will not reduce human bear conflicts. Science shows that removal of food attractants in widespread public education is the answer. Areas in the country with more bears have fewer conflicts due to proper human behavior. It's a people problem, not a bear problem. Uh, removing food attractants, mostly garbage and bird feeders, keeping dogs on leashes. And use of electric fencing to protect livestock and bees are the three biggest methods of reducing human bear conflicts. Today, there seems to be an effort uh, to sneak in a management plan onto this bill that includes an open hunt. Uh, and there's a reason why you're not seeing animal welfare groups here today. It's because this bill, when it was brought up for a public hearing, says nothing about a public, about a bear hunt. It's about management. My testimony has a, has a management plan that is humane. I please ask that you read it. And this, this is somewhat trickery. Uh, again, uh, in there, it's a violation of the public trust. And the reason this trickery is occurring is because I think Deep knows that the public uh, does not want a bear hunt. There's been no science-based population study in many years now. The latest large one was 2014. There was another one in 2019. So they don't know the population. And the, finally, the American Wildlife Values Study, which is also in my testimony. Showed that the values of Deep is misaligned with the values of the people of Connecticut who want peaceful coexistence with wildlife. Connecticut is one of 26 states who filled out a state-specific survey. Uh, encourage you to read that. Um, and a final comment I want to make is with i- with regards to some of the public comments. A gentleman spoke uh, from Avon, the business owner, about the bear that was shot and killed by an at the Avon dumpster in the back. That's a great example of a completely preventable conflict. If that, if that dumps dumpster were secured properly and it was kept clean outside of the dumpster, we wouldn't have had that incident. And this is where in my public hearing testimony, we offer a proposal for a grant. So that the state can provide municipalities with um, funding to help mitigate human bear conflicts, mostly surrounding garbage issues. Uh, Deep said, a final comment, Deep said that garbage cans were $500 each. That's not true. They're about $100 each. Most companies charge about 10 bucks a month if you want to rent a bear-proof garbage can. So that's an exaggeration. And with that, um, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Uh, thank you for your testimony and certainly um, respect everybody's opinions. I just want to be abundantly clear on one thing. Folks came to this committee concerned that the state hasn't done enough to protect its citizens about uh, ongoing bear issues. And I'm sure you're aware of the the case in Wolkett. Um, and to suggest that Deep in some nefarious manner uh, is trying to hide a hunt is just not true. Uh, this committee approached Deep, they did not approach us um, to try to have a conversation on a holistic level as a matter of public safety. Not an emotional one, not to the same conversation that Deep, that the environment committee is having and very appropriately so, knowing their cognizance, right? Um, but you know, we are trying to tackle a problem, which I believe you agree it is a problem. Maybe don't, is that, do you agree that this is an issue that we have to tackle in some way, shape or form?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I agree that it has to be addressed and if the state is involved with addressing this problem. It the the proper measure is going through deep, but they need to enhance their public education efforts. If you saw what they did 10 years ago, I've been following them for many, many years, going to their lectures. Up until just a few years ago, it was, it was major fear mongering. They were trying to incite this fear in the public of black bears. Black bears are docile creatures. They don't want anything to do with people. They, yes, they can get habituated and get comfortable around humans, but that's where public education comes in. And it has to be a community-wide effort. So if a bear is walking through a neighborhood, the the community, everybody has to make that bear uncomfortable in that neighborhood. Everybody has to pull in their garbage. And that effort has not been made by Deep. Only the last couple of years, they're making somewhat of an effort.
Yeah, understood, understood. Uh, but just to be clear, if if this was solely about a hunt, we would have raised a bill on a hunt, right? Even if it's not popular. I mean, you've been listening. We've been talking about 10 to 15 round magazines. That's not. The most consensus-driven discussion in this building, right? But we brought it forward. So uh, we brought forward a management plan with seven or eight points. Because we believe all seven or eight points need to be addressed holistically, which include many of the things in your testimony you said that you support. But I just wanted um, dispense of the suggestion uh, that we're trying to run a hunt by another name. Because frankly, we would run a bill 100% just on a hunt and dispense with the other stuff. That being said, I am, I am very interested in the suggestions that you offer and the management plan that you've put forward. Because I think all those other things, we probably could do a better job in those points uh, going forward. Uh, but but there, this is about as transparent as it gets by the fact that we're having this discussion on television.
Representative, if I may comment.
Please, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Um, the reason I altered my testimony today because I, my testimony surrounded um, the bear. The reason I altered my testimony today, because my testimony surrounded the bear management plan. There's, you know, that's why you're not seeing other animal groups here because, you know, the entire discussion has been promoting a bear trophy hunt from DEEP and every person who's spoken in support.
Right. And I do think that the environment committee is going to be hearing that topic at some point this session. But that's not, that's not what we're hearing here. Now, could a population management piece include a hunt? It might. But you know what? It's part of an eight-point plan because I don't think we're doing a good enough job.
Thank you for that. I think the science, if you look at the science, I've got that in my testimony. Bear hunting is not, is not useful in mitigating human bear conflicts. That, there's other states where they have hunts and you can please look at the studies.
Sure.
That's not what, that, this is strictly a trophy hunt here in Connecticut. That's what this is being proposed. There's no.
Not in this bill. This bill is not proposing a trophy hunt.
No, no, it's not in the language of the bill, but the entire discussion here, including from DEEP, has been about implementing a hunt. That's what my concern is here. And it seems like it's a red herring and it seems like an end run to get trophy hunting through. They've been, it's been shot down every year because the people don't want it and we're seeing it surface again.
Yeah. So, okay. Thank you. Representative.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hornish, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for joining us on Zoom. I guess I just want to make just clarification, make sure I get the definitions right. What are you defining as a trophy hunt specifically?
A trophy, that's what this is for, for the bear hunting. It's a trophy hunt. It's hunting not for purposes of sustenance.
Okay, so, so if I shoot a bear, I get a trophy? Is that what you're trying? I'm trying to understand this.
Not for the purpose, purposes of sustenance. For example, hunting, some people hunt, go into Africa, hunt giraffes. That's not for purposes of sustenance. It's for sport.
Okay.
Entertainment, having, you know.
Right. I think, I think in this case, it might be a, an issue of survival. You, you, you mentioned, if I put it right, you're saying it's a people problem, not a bear problem. So I'm just curious, in the prior testimony, if you heard it from a former state representative, David Wilson, there was a grandfather immobilized and a 10-year-old boy in the backyard, really minding their own business. And a, a bear came into the back and dragged along, dragged this young boy off. Who's created a great, great deal of physical ailment and physical issues to the, to the young boy, created a very dangerous situation to him and his grandfather. I'm just curious, like in that situation, how is that a people problem, not a bear problem?
When bears come into backyards, they're coming for food. There's some attractant. And it's, it's a people problem insofar that communities, neighborhoods need to remove food attractants, or if they have backyard chickens, for example, they have to electrify that electric fencing. It's cheap, it's simple. But they need to know that they need to do it. The, I would caution if that event in Morris, it may not be wise to legislate on extremely rare events. That, that was, I don't know the details of that in terms of, I just saw what I heard on the media. But that was a very rare event, probably the only one I've heard of, of that kind in Connecticut. Other cases like when Bobby the Bear was killed in Newtown by an off-duty police officer who shot an AR-15 in Newtown to kill Bobby the Bear, when the fact was he wasn't properly protecting his chickens. He had no proper electric fencing. That was a completely preventable event again. And that could have, that didn't, didn't, not need to happen.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not familiar with Bobby, but the, how about the, the account that we heard? The woman who was barricaded upstairs in her house, she couldn't come downstairs because there was a bear running around down there. For fear of her life, she's in her own home, minding her own business. There's a bear rampaging through her house. What did she do wrong?
I sympathize with the fear that woman certainly may have felt. Keeping a door shut not only protects bears coming in, but other people from coming in. So that is something of fundamental security measure could have been taken there. I'm not familiar with how the bear got in, but I assume through a door or a screen or some easy-to-get-through access point. But again, preventable, if the community, if bears are trained to stay out of communities and in the woods where they belong, even DEEP said today that there's plenty of carrying capacity. I think Mr. Holly said we're only at 33%, meaning if we, if we do a good public education effort and people are trained in their communities in businesses, with dumpsters, with private garbage, with taking in bird feeders from March through November, with keeping dogs on leashes, things like that, if that is happening, bears will stay in the ample natural space that they currently have.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not saying where I have to have my house locked up like Fort Knox. Perhaps not cook on the back deck. I can't grill. I love grilling. So, you know, I can't, I gotta barricade myself my house. I don't know, maybe put up.
I'm not saying that, Representative.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not, not sure, I'm not clear what you're saying.
Representative, bears are, black bears are generally very docile animals. They're not, the talk here today, it makes them sound like they're intentionally invading homes and attacking people. Bears really don't want, if you ever approach a black bear, all it usually takes is just a little bit of noise, blow a whistle, walk towards them, they'll run away. They don't want anything to do with people. They're the gentlest of the bears. We're blessed to have them here in Connecticut.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to, at least somebody to tell that 10-year-old boy and his grandfather that. But, okay, well, I certainly, I think we have a difference of opinion here, but thank you for your testimony. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions? Any other questions? Representative Jenga, the Dean of the Public Safety Committee.
I got a promotion. Thank you. Annie?
Hello.
Thanks for your advocacy. The Deputy Commissioner made one statement that, quote, "We're the only state to not have a bear hunt." Could you respond to that?
Oh, yes, I would love to. He, I think the Deputy Commissioner, Mason Trumbly, said that we're the only state in the area in this region that doesn't have a bear hunt. That's not true, actually. Rhode Island also does not have a bear hunting season.
Can I ask you in your?
Can you repeat, Representative? I think your mic was off and she may not have heard you.
I did not. Thank you.
I wanted to follow up and ask you why these other states do have it.
It's the sportsmen and the hunting advocates who have been successful. Here in Connecticut, we're different from other states. Around 1% only of the population hunts. It's a very, very small percentage of people who hunt. Other states, there's more people who hunt. They have a stronger lobby, if you, you know, so to say, and the people demand it. The, the hunting of bears is not for management of human bear conflicts. It's strictly for sport. And that's something in Connecticut, we don't have a lot of people who engage in that. And the majority of people do want humane solutions to wildlife conflicts.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Howard.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I get that you don't support a hunt and I, and I appreciate your, your back and forth with the chairman. And I acknowledge what you said that, you know, in DEEP, and it sounds like you were on this morning, that DEEP essentially testified that they've tried everything else and that they're at a point where a hunt would work and you disagree that they've put significant effort in. Is that a fair characterization?
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah.
Thank you. So I know you disagree with the hunt, but you talked about the science and I, I think there's a lot of data oftentimes. You know, I have an NIH report in front of me from some work that they did in Minnesota. Are you at least in agreement that a hunt will control the population?
Um, no, it can reduce a population for a temporary period, but keep in mind that we have a small number of bears in Connecticut and bears are a very slow-to-reproduce species. In other states that do have bear hunts, it's done for recreational purposes, not to manage human bear conflicts. And that's what this issue is before this committee today. It's ostensibly a public safety issue. And if that's the case, managing the human bear conflicts is what is supposed to, is what's being discussed here. A hunt is not going to achieve, achieve that objective.
So it's, is your position that hunting bears will not reduce the population?
Hunting bears, if you, it's not, when you hunt, you will lower the population, but that population will adjust towards the carrying capacity of the area. We're, right now, we're much lower. I think Jason Holly said 33% of the carrying capacity, meaning we have plenty of wild spaces for the bears, for bears to live right now. And the people of Connecticut do not want to hunt and we should learn ways to coexist with bears.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand your position on this because clearly you've done a lot of, I looked at your testimony, there's a lot of references in it. So is it your position then that a hunt would reduce the bear population but may not reduce the amount of human conflict? Is that?
That's, that's exactly correct, Representative. It doesn't correlate and that's what the science shows. If you think about it, the, the bears, like when hunters are hunting, they're not going to be hunting in downtown West Hartford. They're going to be in the woods and that's where we want the bears to be. The, there's no guarantee even if a hunter is hunting in the woods that they're killing a problem bear. That bear could be doing exactly what we want those bears to do and teaching their cubs to do the same. So that we want, we want bears in the woods and, and we have to educate people on how to interact to keep bears out of neighborhoods and how we need to interact when we're in their spaces too. Make noise when you're walking so you alert bears of your presence. They'll stay away from you. Wear a whistle, blow a whistle, scare away a bear if they, if they come up to you. Keep your dog on a leash while hiking. These are very simple things we can do.
All right. So again, I'm looking at an NIH report, the National Library of Medicine, and I'm going to read this one section to you. It says, "Conflicts were, this is regarding black bears conflicts were appreciably reduced when the population drastically declined due to hunting. This occurred in concert with a policy change, but little additional effort at public education and virtually no government assistance with mitigation, other than providing verbal advice." You would disagree with that conclusion?
I would need to see that study. Of course, if you go into any population and if it's a widespread massacre like we saw in Florida, when they instituted a hunt after many years of no hunting and it was a pretty reckless killing down in Florida. Yes, that reduced the population, but the population is right back at, to a level now in Florida where they're, they're, they're considering doing it again because they're not addressing what needs to be done, which is mitigation of human bear conflicts. They're, they're, it's the trophy hunting, the hunters who are looking for a sporting activity. They're not, it's not resolving the problem of, associated with public safety.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Remember, any other questions for members of the committee? Hearing done. I appreciate your willingness to come forward and have this conversation. We'll take further look at your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Next is, I believe, online Jonathan Peroli. Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. You can hear me?
Yep, we can. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Distinguished members of the Public Safety Committee, my name is Jonathan Perlo. I'm a resident of Kos Cob. I recently retired from Connecticut Against Gun Violence. However, this testimony reflects my personal views. I urge you to vote against HB 7052 and act concerning large-capacity magazines. Honestly, I'm disappointed that your committee, whose responsibility is to make the public safe, would even consider a bill that will do just the opposite. It's worth recalling why the General Assembly passed a ban on large-capacity magazines in the first place. It followed the slaughter of 20 first-grade students and six educators at Sandy Hook Elementary School. Because the shooter had large-capacity magazines, he was able to fire 156 rounds in less than five minutes. There's widespread evidence supporting limits on magazine capacity to reduce shooting fatalities. A study in the American Journal of Public Health found that states that ban large-capacity magazines have fewer mass shooting incidents and fewer fatalities. If you go to the Giffers website, there's a lot of additional evidence supporting what I just said. Proponents of the bill have said that it merely seeks to increase capacity, not remove the limit altogether, even though they, many of them do seem to support an outright repeal. While that's true, there's no public safety argument for why the capacity needs to be increased. And similarly, there's no public safety argument for easing the buying and selling of ammunition, as the bill also proposes. I implore you to continue the legislature's tradition of putting the sanctity of life above, above the desires of the gun lobby. I also think it's important that this bill be considered in the context of what's happening right now with respect to keeping Americans safe from gun violence. In the face of decades of congressional inaction at the federal level, state-level regulation of firearms has always been the first line of defense in keeping guns out of the hands of those who shouldn't have them and keeping weapons of war out of the hands of civilians. Connecticut's strong gun laws are one of the reasons we have the sixth lowest rate of gun deaths in the nation. Fortunately, in Connecticut, there's been bipartisan support for strong gun laws. The Bipartisan Safer Communities Act that was signed into law by President Biden was the first strengthening of federal gun laws in nearly 30 years. It had an immediate impact on keeping guns out of the hands of dangerous people. But with Donald Trump back in the White House, that progress has come to a screeching halt. Trump called himself the best friend gun owners have ever had in the White House. And he's making good on that claim with his executive order to roll back many measures that restrict access to firearms by dangerous people or hold the gun, gun industry accountable. It's an appalling move that will increase gun crime and death. It's particularly shocking coming after the largest drop in gun homicides in U.S. history that happened during President Biden's term. Now more than ever, maintaining Connecticut's strong gun regulations is critical to keeping us safe. We learned a lesson from the Sandy Hook school shooting. The legislature took action and saved lives. Please don't abandon that tradition. I urge you to vote no on HB 7052. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony today.
Thank you. First, for your patience, having been around all day and your testimony. We'll be sure to look at your written testimony as well. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the committee? Hearing done. Again, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next is Jeff Roy. Jeff Roy. Isaac Hayes, Haley's? Keith Cagle? Welcome, Keith. Thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you, friends. Thank you for having me.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I'm Keith Cagle, President of Friends of Connecticut Sportsman. It's a volunteer position. I'm not a paid professional like some people that we've recently heard from. I do this for the passion of it. I, I listened to quite a bit and I had testimony prepared. And I really don't know, even know where to start after some of the stuff I've, I've, I've heard. I am in support of the bears and I am in support of the magazine, or magazine, magazine, magazine aspect of it, because they, they both make sense. You know, I heard the phrase a lot, trophy. We, we run a very successful game tasting here, right in the, in the, in the, in the lobby of the Legislative Office Building. We've seen people from both sides of the aisle that have never tasted game meat before eat 250 bear hot dogs with venison chili on them over the last couple of years and everybody seemed to really enjoy them. Everybody's welcome. No matter what we agree or disagree on, we could all agree on something good to eat. And the game-to-table, field-to-table movement is a, is a huge part of where hunters are today. There's no, there's no such thing as trophy hunting. The testimony we heard earlier from Jason Holly was very, very compelling testimony. I wish Representative Lenou had stayed for a few more minutes because when you look at the way this attack in Morris was, it was a predatory attack on a 10-year-old boy. That bear took that boy off a, off a trampoline and had him by the abdomen. Unfortunately, when bears kill people or eat people, they don't kill them first. They eat them alive. And that's the direction that that was going in. Don't think that bears are cuddly teddy bears and that they're your buddies. They're pretty vicious animals. And we know that, that what happens when we see these animals is usually N-Com police comes out and they take care of it. They kill these bears. Two years ago, three houses down from Representative Maria Horn's house, a bear broke into a house three days in a row. I don't think that they wanted that bear to break in three days in a row. And on the third day, they had to shoot him while they were setting up a trap for that bear. So all of this, all of these super dumpsters and super garbage cans and all that. When you have a bear that that has moved into your neighborhood, I think you just have no other recourse. It's not going to be banging on pots and pans. You know, I I urge, I know this isn't the Environmental Committee, but I think the agency has done a good job following the North American model. I want to add one one other thing, and I can show everybody I belong to numerous hunting and fishing clubs. One of them is Fairfield County Fishing Game in Sandy Hook, right at ground zero of World Gun Control. If you look at their webpage, you'll see a letter from the Ronald McDonald House where they raised sixty two thousand dollars on one afternoon for the Ronald McDonald House at a sporting clays event. Most people that come to these and for those that don't know what sporting clays, it's it's like it's like a combination of golf and skeet where you go from one place to the other to the other and you and you shoot. Most of these people don't have ammo cards today. So this stuff like that makes it makes it tricky to have things like that done. But sportsmen are on the right side of everything, and I appreciate having this opportunity to testify in front of you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you about the ammo piece, but you jumped into that at the end of your testimony. You know, certainly the intent is not for us to be able to backdoor ammo sales out the door. We're trying to people who come to the clubs who may not be owners themselves, right? Who are using these items at the club there to have reasonable access to it, that piece of it. And is that something your organization hears from clubs across the state as something that could be an issue?
Absolutely. You know, a lot of people were were pretty much forced to get pistol permits in this state that didn't want to have. They had no desire to own pistol permits, but it just made it easier to buy a new shotgun or more ammo. So, you know, this is always to me the state of unintended consequences. And this was an unintended consequence of it. There's there's probably a hundred thousand people with pistol permits that don't own pistols, but it's the only way they can buy ammo and buy new long guns in a timely fashion.
Thank you. I had to represent.
Well, now let me just say, thank you for me. What a great point, right? Because when we created this, we created four choices. Pistol permit, long gun eligibility certificate, handgun eligibility certificate, ammo certificate, right?
Right.
And and the pistol permit is the easiest because you get a rate in the town where you where you live. And it's all encompassing. So so when they passed the bill, what they did is they encouraged everybody in Connecticut, basically who wanted to have anything to do with firearms, they get a permit to carry one, and they're carrying them every day, which doesn't bother me. As I said, these are the safe people, but I wanted to ask you, you're a hunter.
I am.
And you've eaten black bear.
Yeah, I have.
And you've shared with your friends.
Absolutely.
Because a previous speaker said that black bears being killed would not be for sustenance. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. Absolutely not true. They're all eaten.
All right, thank you very. And let me just ask you this. Do you support going out and shooting animals just for the fun of it?
I don't know anybody that shoots animals for the fun of it. I'm I'm an animal lover and I've been a hunter for sixty years. But I want to go on the record as an animal lover. Nobody gets treated better than my dogs. My dogs have it better than ninety percent of the people on this planet. Anybody that knows me knows that.
So I think that's a I asked you that because I think that, again, like I said to a previous speaker, I think things get misrepresented sometimes, and I think folks should recognize. If you're a hunter and there's no more animals to hunt, you can't hunt anymore. I don't know that anybody is cares more about sustaining the population of a certain animal than the people who hunt it. Wouldn't you agree?
I absolutely agree. You know, I I don't know, I only have a few minutes, but I also have been the sitting chairman of the Connecticut Conservation Advisory Council for the last ten years, and that's a an organization where when it was formed in nineteen seventy two to disseminate information back and forth between sportsmen and the different hunting and hunting groups in the state. All the regulations that are talked about get talked about at that council. And I would welcome anybody that would like to come to come. But I've I've been involved in this for for a long time at at this level, and it's it's always interesting to me to hear. I think that that the agency has done pretty much a lot of what they could do. Now they need to get they just need just a little bit more help. And I I can't I can't say enough about Jason Holly's work. I went to a meeting last week where his office was, and it was seven o'clock at night and he was still there working. That guy's a tireless worker, and I don't think anybody knows more about bears in Connecticut than Jason Holly. It's sad to me that we have to hear any kind of anything based on emotion and what he's doing wrong.
Right, and 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 to your to your point in the work that you do, I don't know that any group of people cares more about maintaining a game population than those who hunt it. So thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the committee? No, and I believe just as I said to the I think the the first time I ever had black bear was in a meatball in the lobby of this building in like twenty nineteen. So, you know, it's not it's not something that is that is common.
Hopefully you'll come back for the for the jalapeno cheddar hot dogs.
I had one last year. It's very good, so.
Representative Mushinsky seemed to be a big fan of them. She she enjoyed.
Well, that in itself is an accomplishment. Good job, sir.
Huge accomplishment.
All right, thank you. Yep. Next is John Powers, who I believe is online. John, welcome.
Thank you for having me. They're in person. I'm here in support of HB seventy fifty two. We've gone over it a lot, so I'll just give a quick couple bullet points. The standard capacity, there is no such thing. It's a made up term. I have multiple firearms and each firearm has its own capacity. Majority of them are over ten rounds. The, oh, I'm sorry, I have a few things over here. I'm going to attack it at a different way too, something I know this is for health and, you know, protection. We also have to look at it as we can't buy anything if it's over ten rounds. I compete in other states. So when I go to another state to compete, I'm at a disadvantage because of the equipment that I am limited to buy in my own state. I'm a trained safety officer for competitions. And when I was at a competition, excuse me, at a training recently, I asked a question about is there a magazine limit of ten rounds? And I was laughed at. And they were like, where are you from? And then I said Connecticut, and they said I was in from the communist state of Connecticut because we are anti-gun and I had to kind of defend that. But I just think it's kind of silly. I think that there shouldn't be any type of limit on the capacity that we're allowed to carry. And I'm not going to go over it because I think everyone's touched it already, but I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, sir. What what type of competition do you compete in?
Steel Challenge, Room Fire Challenge, and USPSA.
And are the 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 regulations around those competitions, Connecticut laws are not compliant with them? So you can't, in effect, you can't practice in Connecticut or?
I could practice, but I can only practice with ten rounds. Now, when I go, when I go to another state, I can have fifteen rounds, I can have twenty rounds, I could have thirty rounds. I've never been to a match. I'm new to the USPSA circuit, but I've seen pictures where people have stick mags of forty rounds. And that way they don't have to reload at all because it's all a timed event.
What's that? What's the norm?
For, I'm sorry, for what?
For the number of rounds.
It depends on your firearm. I mean, I have guns that are ten rounds. I have one competition gun that's nineteen rounds.
I didn't know if the particular competitions required certain hardware to produce a bit.
No, the most of our open. You know, it depends on sometimes on what category you're you're competing in. But, you know, when we compete in Connecticut or Rhode Island, then they'll, you know, say, hey, we have to keep it on the same scale. Everyone has to have ten rounds, even if you are grandfathered in.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the committee? Hearing none? Thank you for your patience today and your testimony.
Thank you for my.
Next is Matthew Fauschen. I may have gotten that incorrect. Welcome, and I guess we've gone long enough that you went from being remote to in person, so welcome, sir.
Yes, I made the drive.
Well, welcome.
Lost a little bit of weight, but you still don't fit in these chairs with a duty belt on. Good afternoon, members of the Public Safety Committee, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My thanks also to Senator Slapp and Representative Piscopo for their support of this bill. I am here today to testify in favor of a bill that affects every town and city in this state, which is Senate Bill thirteen seventy four, which changes training requirements for armed school security officers. I'm a Burlington, Connecticut, police officer, working under the Resident Trooper Program for Troop L in Litchfield, and I'm assigned as a school resource officer for Region Ten Schools, Burlington and Harrington. There is no school to prison pipeline. That is a myth. Next, it's important to draw the distinction between a school resource officer and an armed school security officer. School resource officers are sworn police officers that are actively employed by a police department. We have full powers of arrest and receive all the training that is mandated for Connecticut police. We have little discretion when it comes to arrests in schools. In ninety nine percent of school arrest cases, it is at the request of a school administrator. Armed school security officers, on the other hand, are employees of the school district. By statute, they must be retired in good standing from a police department, and they have no arrest powers. In my schools, as in many, they conduct no investigations. They are governed by the policies and procedures of their employing school district. They're not mall security guards. They are professionals, experts in every aspect of their field. They're well-trained police officers that are now well-trained school security officers with years and in some cases, decades of experience. Currently, the mandated, the statutory mandating mandated training is not good enough. Current statute requires security officers attend annual firearms qualification, which is easy to accomplish because we can do it anywhere with an appropriate instructor. But the other statute requires an annual certification that includes and requires gang and drug recognition, and little else is received in the way of training for them. That training is required to be presented and attended at the post academy in Meriden. SB thirteen seventy four calls for two changes to the current bill, allowing our security officers officers to attend training in a post-approved curriculum at any location in the state provided by a post-approved instructor. The bill also will remove the requirement for gang and drug recognition training, but will allow a curriculum of training be developed for armed security officers. This bill is about bringing more, not less, more and better training to our security officers. Security officers are armed for one purpose, to be prepared to address an active killer attack at a school. Many, if not most rural and suburban schools do not have a gang problem, and many do not use their security for discipline. That is the case in my schools. We are not involved in student discipline whatsoever. A fraction of armed security in Connecticut have to address gang problems. That would be the inner cities. But one hundred percent of armed security officers are armed and exist to protect schools from a violent attack. So one hundred percent of their training should be thus focused. This bill would allow us to introduce a broad curriculum to include review of use of force statutes and case law, not training in force techniques, recognition of persons carrying concealed weapons, recognition of persons that are through body language that are planning an attack, security concepts such as perimeter strengths and vulnerabilities, risk assessment, stop the bleed training, which is critical and is now becoming more common in these types of training, weapon handling, safety, weapon retention concepts, qualified immunity statutes that exist in Board of Education for employees, firearm storage, de-escalation techniques, FERPA, which is the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, which is a critical component of being a school employee. Other training certainly has its important place, such as mental health and restorative practices. However, in a school like mine, where we don't participate in those in those types of crises, it would be wasted on us. This is what the bill provides, a school district by school district option for different needs. As a closing thought, it is never measurable, and we will never know the tragedies that our security officers have prevented just by being there vigilantly standing their posts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer. I appreciate your testimony. Just quick procedural thing, Senator Slapp apologizes for not being here. He chairs higher ed and they're taking votes on bills right now, but he wanted to make sure that that you knew that. Secondly, I don't know if you were on or listening to some of the testimony earlier in the day in opposition to you addressed a little bit in your testimony. Is there anything you want to kind of throw out or stuck out from the the testimony in opposition that that you want to clarify or you didn't think was a hundred percent on point?
Absolutely. Thank you, Representative Boyd. The 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 two big ones are guns in schools and school to prison pipeline. School to prison pipeline doesn't exist. I have been in this role for just under three years. Before that, I was a trooper for twenty years. And we don't, we as a profession, cops, we kind of dread having to arrest kids, especially early in my career when younger kids, when sixteen was still considered adult. Taking even at that age, taking them away in cuffs was not something we enjoy doing because they're children, because they're kids, even at sixteen. And there's an array of complications that go with that. And it's unpleasant. It's absolutely heart wrenching to go to a parent, any parent in any community and say, I had to arrest your kid. Have I had to arrest kids since I've been in SRO? Yes. Have any of them gone to prison? Absolutely not, because now if you're not eighteen, you're not going in handcuffs with certain exceptions. But that those exceptions, or rather, that is true in even the most urban school environments where they have more, you know, more police involvement. Because a drug offense at a school in New Haven is the same as a drug offense at a school in Burlington. It's a it's a juvenile summons. And in most cases, they're going to go about their day unless there's a weapon involved or something like that. There those are the exceptions, weapons, auto theft, stuff like that. So the prison, the school to prison pipeline, it's just a talking point that people that have never come and walked a day with security officers in schools or with school resource officers use to try to get us out of schools. The other and as far as guns in schools go, I have a staff of ten school security officers. They're all retired cops. And these guys are hard chargers. I've got military men, I've got longtime police officers, I've got a retired trooper. And I can't tell you the number of times, myself included, in front of classrooms where we'll get choked up because we are going to talk about stepping between the bad that's outside that wants to get in and our kids and our teachers. And these these men that range in age from, I'm forty nine, and I've got guys that work well into their sixties for me. These guys will run to the sound of that gunfire, and they will put themselves between the kids and the and the bad guys because that's what that's the only thing they're there for. And if that never happens, then we all in in a career, then we all go home happy. But if the rest of the time, when they're not dealing with tragedy, they're interacting with kids and teachers, they've had the greatest career that one can imagine. And and that's that's what we are doing as school resource officers and as school security, as we're there for the kids.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Representative Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. I just want to thank you for being here. Did you? Did you hear the back and forth between myself and another testifier earlier today about?
I, yes, I heard. I heard a lot.
Yes, so I just want to thank you for being here because that goes on every day, you know, and you know, in this building, it continuously gets intentionally or unintentionally mixed up between what an SRO is and what an armed security officer is, and then what each person's role is. So it's so in my four years, you're the first sitting SRO that I've seen come here and actually tell a committee, this is how it actually works because they make policy in this building on these myths that they've created. And it's and it's in part not their fault because we don't have enough police officers come forward and have the courage to sit there and tell folks in legislature what goes on. So. So I just want to thank you. I hesitate to thank you when you said you used to be a trooper, but no, I'm only joking. But in all seriousness, I want to thank you for being here and sticking out till three-thirty and taking the time to help everybody in this building understand what is actually happening every day as opposed to what we hear here. So just thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions from members of the, Senator Trigorello?
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Just one more thing for clarification. When you were on the job prior to being an SRO, and each year would go by, you would have to get training from your department, correct?
Yes.
And where would you get the training?
Throughout my state police career at the State Police Academy, and now we, now we use it, we partner with another police department to provide our training for Burlington.
So same thing in North Haven, when they have to do their training and, you know, every year, they have to do it a couple of times, different types of training, active shooter, making sure they're qualifying with their weapons. This legislation would help you train with the department you work with, or the department you work within. Is that fair to say?
Yes. So this will open doors. So that was, one of the biggest restrictions for us was that to meet the state mandatory requirement for training is that everybody has to go to Meriden. And the environment in Meriden, they do a great job for what they do. But all the security officers in Connecticut were going on the same day. So you might have four hundred guys squeezing into the academy auditorium, which isn't really that big. And again, I've got, we're all retirees, you know, there's people in their forties and there's people in their seventies because they're going to these trainings, and they're standing room only for an eight-hour class. And so one of the driving factors when I suggested this legislation was I can do a lot of this training in-house, whatever the curriculum is. If you want to keep with the gang and drug requirement, I can teach that, but I could teach my ten guys in-house. Just let me get the blessing of the academy. And the academy said, we can't by statute, can't do it. To your point, we could now bring those guys, train with current active police officers. If other school districts want to partner with one another and hire, instead of one school district bearing the burden of hiring an instructor for whatever subject, they could partner with other school districts and say, all right, instead of having four hundred people in one room at the academy, we'll, we'll get twenty people from two or three school districts, and we'll get better training, better quality training, and we're going to cover a wider range of really important topics. Because again, these people have one purpose. One purpose is really what our mission is, and that's to stop another tragedy. That's it. So let's get these guys trained better than they could, they've ever been trained before. All the restorative practices stuff is, it's important, but not everybody in this industry is going to do it. Let's have a minimum standard for what everybody needs to do, but then leave on the table for the school districts that want to use the training, want to use their security for those practices, they can provide that training. This bill will free up, free us up so that we can do more training and in a better and more constructive environment.
Excellent. Thank you for answering the question, and I kind of see it the same exact way. And in the event that you talked about, four hundred resource officers will go to Meriden, and God forbid of a terrible event, those individuals won't be responding to your school or to help you. But if you were able to train within your town or the officers that are going to respond, then there's more of a solid plan, right? You're going to be training with the individuals that are going to come for support. God forbid of that tragedy were to take place. And I think it would make for a better plan, better response, more communication. And I just think it makes sense. And I thank you for putting this forward, testifying, working with Senator Slapp. And hopefully we could get this across the finish line. Just seems to make sense. And again, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Any other questions from members of the committee? Hearing none. Thank you for your time and your advocacy.
Thank you, sir.
Next is online, Larissa Hartline, I believe. Larissa? Welcome. The floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. My name is Larissa Hartline, and I'm submitting this testimony on House Bill seven zero five one. My husband and I own a small local business in Glastonbury called Wild Birds Unlimited, and I'm presenting this information and testimony as dedicated business owners and for the other Wild Birds Unlimited store owners, our customers, and an untold number of other Connecticut residents beyond that. Wild Birds Unlimited has seven stores in Connecticut, all of which are locally owned and focused directly in the area of bird feeding. Our stores employ over forty employees and provide goods and services to a collective, regular customer base of more than thirteen thousand Connecticut residents, all of whom enjoy the hobby of backyard bird feeding. As bird feeding is often brought up in the context of bear management, it is my goal to present the committee with important background information on this topic as you consider the issues in House Bill seven zero five one. Bear management strategies continue to be a growing issue in this state. We all share one thing in common. We care about the future of our state and safety of our residents, and we believe that the preservation of our safety is critically important. Our store owners and our parent organization have done extensive research into the areas under consideration and would like to be a resource for the committee on certain aspects of the proposed legislation. Whenever fear is raised, the initial reaction is to take drastic measures, i.e. to stop doing a particular thing altogether or to start doing something that previously was prohibited. Often, in the area of bear management, neither of these responses promises healthy, long-term solutions. The answer lies in the middle. We can modify our behavior and in doing so, learn to safely live in an environment in which people and nature must continue to coexist. Bears are attracted to food with scent. Once brought to a person's yard by unrelated tasty smells, they may then discover other lesser, different forms of food, such as bird feeders. But it is most often the tasty scents which are the byproduct of our daily lives that draw the bears to our neighborhoods in the first place. Consider the following recommendations and basic precautions with which we can make our residential neighborhoods more physically safe without prohibiting otherwise rewarding activities, specifically for people who live in areas in which bear activity is prevalent. Don't leave garbage outside, and when you must, do so in clean, disinfected, odor-free containers. Burn your backyard barbecues clean. Wash and store them out of the wind. Keep your compost clean. Never compost animal waste, meat, fish, or sweet foods, including fruit. Sprinkle compost with lime, which aids in the composting process while also reducing the smell of the compost itself. If you have fruit trees, remove the fruit as it ripens and do not allow fruit to rot on the ground below the tree. Never leave pets outside unattended, especially at night. Lastly, if you enjoy backyard bird feeding and live in a high bear population area, utilize the following tactics to allow yourself to continue to safely enjoy your hobby without endangering yourself or those around you. Store bird food securely indoors in airtight containers. Bring feeders in at night and put them out in the morning. Use a mobile patio base for your feeder station as opposed to one planted securely in the ground. This allows you to move your station periodically, preventing habitual seed buildup below the feeders. Employ tidy bird feeding strategies, such as installing trays below feeders to prevent spillage. Use quality seed mixes. Many cheaper mixes contain filler or undesired seeds that birds will kick to the ground uneaten. Switch to sunflower chips or other shell-less, no-mess blends. This food is considered far tidier, includes only food the birds will eat, and leaves no hull debris behind to accumulate below. Switch to hot pepper bird food options. Hot pepper bird food products act as an incredible deterrent to mammals, but have no negative impact on the birds. Utilize second-story feeders, such as those hung from a wall mount hook or mounted on a window with suction cups. However, do keep in mind that bears can scale rough surfaces. So if your home boasts a more rustic type of siding, this may not be the best option for you. Use a bear-proof feeder pole. Heavy-duty, tall, and operated with winches or pulleys, these devices remove feeders from the reach of bears, preventing them from eating the food while still allowing you to lower the feeders to fill them. Most importantly, always remember that squirrels, raccoons, and bears are incredibly unlikely to approach hot pepper bird food stations and usually show no interest in it after having encountered it once before in the past. Some bears can have higher tolerances for the pepper products than others, especially when natural food is scarce. But the overall results of hot pepper bird food usage are overwhelmingly positive. Utilizing these time-tested strategies, we will be able to continue to maintain a safe environment in our neighborhoods without sacrificing one of the great joys of life, year-round bird feeding. As you investigate the most, the important policy issue of how to safely coexist with bears, please remember this vital point. We can adapt by making small behavioral modifications, which will lead to large improvements in this endeavor to reduce human and bear interactions, helping keep us all safe. As you continue your deliberations on this important legislation, please feel free to contact us with any questions you have about bird feeding or if you have any further questions or require any additional participation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present my testimony and this information to the committee today. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. You really gave us a lot to think about there. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none. Thank you for your time. Is there anybody here who would like to testify? Anybody in the room that would like to testify? Hearing none, we will call this public hearing to a close. Thank you all for your time.